You pay the cost of transporting your body to a funeral home, but then you don't pay anything else. There's no cost. When they're done with whatever they're going to do, they'll cremate the body and send the ashes back to the family at no cost. So there is a small expense.
It's great. We'll call them Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show that today is November the 27th. The time is nine o'clock a.m. I wonder, Commissioner Prince, if you would do the honor of serving leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Scraping the bottom there.
Yeah, we've gone to the bottom of the barrel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out that the Canadian did pledge allegiance.
Oh, well, let the record show. Well, the record probably did show. Because you're in front of the camera. I would remind everybody to silence your cellphones, if you would, please. Prevent any unnecessary interruptions. Madam Sec- Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. We'll move on to audience introductions. I think we'll start over here today. And if you would say your name, and Ms. Kelly will record that you were a visitor in our meeting today.
Wilson Jarvis, Rural Custer County.
Elliot Jackson, Wedmont Tribune.
Right, sir.
Rob Klein, Centennial Ranch.
I'm Marilyn Hennessy, West Cliff.
Dan Bubas, Rural Custer County.
Jackie Bubas, Brother Sentinel.
Good morning. Welcome to all of you. Nice to have you here. It was Rob?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Wanted to make sure I didn't eventually say, "Well, Bob, it's nice to have you here."
Neither are.
That's not your name.
Call me Joe, call me Bob.
He's from New York.
Nice to have you. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
Good.
I have none, sir.
Nor do I. Commissioner Kanda?
No.
Okay. Move on. Approval of the minutes? I don't think we have any. Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 we do. November the 13th. Why didn't I get that down?
I'll go that way. approved on November 13th.
I'll second it.
November 13th, or it's been moved and seconded to approve November 13th minutes. Discussion.
This is a little warm up here, Kelly.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving November 13th minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pos nay. If you carry, minutes were approved. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I looked at them. I just didn't get it on my agenda that we were doing that. Commissioner Idens, Commissioner Kanda, would you like to begin, sir?
Sure. After the meeting on the 13th, I did attend the Upper Ark meeting on the 14th. I think it was the 14th.
Yeah.
And it was good. They did bring up the fact that they are planning to meet with the proposers to the blue line. It only will occur after the first of the year, though, in order to get everything together for that meeting. So we'll know more later. And we saw a few things in the email. Some, this looks like some other disputes they're settling. Wasn't able to hit the Airport Board meeting, but they're working. The cars, it looks like they got both of them out there again.
Mm-huh.
And so moving on that. And then we did talk to Kit about filing for the ramp, broken concrete ramp out in front of the garage. So we'll, and then I haven't followed up with either Lynn or Donna, but he was going to talk to Donna about how to go about that. Do you know anything about that?
Well, the last word I got is they wanted us to file it on our insurance claim.
Who, they did?
The fire department.
No, I talked to Kit and said, "That's not how it works." But I don't know, when did you talk to Kit last?
Oh, I didn't talk to her. I think Donna mentioned that, or I got...
Well, that was his first response. That was what we thought, you know, because it, but I said, "Well, sort of like a liability on a car." You know? Followed sort of the same process. And his, their insurance will have to deal with our insurance. And, you know, they're going to go through it just like you would with any other two share insurance companies. That's my understanding. I'll follow up on that with Lynn.
Yeah, there's no reason for our insurance company to pay it. We didn't do the damage.
Nope, unless they were an uninsured government agency, so, and they're not. So they'll work it out. That's what I understand. Then we did the, we went to Denver, the three of us, only you were already there, and did the unfunded court presentation for our grant that we applied for, for $30,000 bucks. And it was quick. You're going to have to tell us why it was so quick. I don't remember being that quick before. But we asked for the $30,000, and we were granted the $30,000 on Monday, I think it was.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to compliment you. I think you did a really nice job presenting that.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
What was the grant for, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, there's a couple of things that are going on. We've got the land for the courthouse, and we're going with that. We've got a grant to go get the architect to come up with a concept that meets all our requirements. We did the requirements ourselves for what the needs were, for both the courts and the jail and the municipal, the joint session, what do we call it?
Judicial.
Judicial Center. And now, we want to put together the program in order to raise the money. And raising the money comes from several sources: grants, other donations, and taxes, different kinds of ways to do it. And what we want to try to do is get the biggest bang for the buck without the, with the biggest impact to our citizens. So that's why we want to approach this right. We want to introduce it to the citizens as we go along, so they understand where we are and why we have what we have. And I sat through every one of those briefings the other day, and I'll tell you, there's all these county, we're lucky from a point of view of a small county, we're not far behind. But these other counties are asking for tons of money, and I think we're in a lot better position than most of these others. I think one of them came in looking for, what, $13 million bucks or something?
Uh, $2.5 million.
Or was it $2.5? I mean, it was, no, there was one even had, they had a bigger program, but they were looking for $2.5 million.
Correct.
Right. So we're right there, and it's a requirement. That's another thing that everybody has to realize. We cannot not have a courthouse, and we cannot not have a jail, and we cannot not have the ability to handle them correctly and safely. So they were pleased with how we're going about it, and I thought it went pretty well. And I was working the broadband. I did the briefing to the West Cliff Town Board, you know, special session they had. They took that information about how we're handling that to their trustees, and they approved it. They sent the, signed IGA up to Silver Cliff, and I understand from what I got back from feedback on it, that the Silver Cliff Board signed it, too. Were you there for that, Jane? And so now, all we need to do is to have a, we're going to have to come together and have a strategy session on it, I guess. Which gets me to Sally Clark. Had a talk with her, and she will be here on the 12th of December. And we'll have opportunity to talk to her Ops Chief that handles this, the presentations and, or the programs for putting in the broadband across the state for the USDA. And Sally also wants to talk to us about other infrastructure kinds of opportunities there are for counties from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to us in the same presentation. We can ask questions about the funding and all that.
Do you have the time for her?
Not yet. And she asked me to pick the best time, and I think I've been tossing that over. We want to give her a chance to get here and then leave the same day. And I think maybe eat her right before lunch and give her a little sandwich while we're doing it, or we can do it right after lunch.
Showing that that's also a part of it, so.
Yeah, I know. It's a busy day, and also the Action 22 guys are in the middle of that, too. So I was going to get a rep for Action 22. I told her we would try to do our best to get it, and I think, Tom, you can't make that.
No. I'm out of town.
So I could ask her to move that to see if she's got, if we went on either side of that, it would be the 11th for you, probably.
I know she's going to be here for several days, because West Cliff is going to be with her also. I don't remember what day it was.
I'll talk to West Cliff and find out what their, West Cliff and Silver Cliff, to figure out what options are.
Maybe it would make sense to do it all at once.
Seems to me she ought to kill three birds with one stone.
Yeah, I mean, if we could get all three organizations to...
Well, we're going to have, that's the point. We are going to, it's not, she's not coming just for us.
Okay.
It's for the three of us all together.
Good.
To listen to the broadband pitch.
Let's coordinate that with what...
That's what I'm going to work with them first. And if we can move it, I would, the best time would be to move it on to the 11th, if it gets to be too hard. But we got it covered. You will figure it out.
That's right.
You're going to have to get somebody for the Upper Ark, too, right? Are you going to it first and then?
Uh, no. I fly out at 1:30.
That's what I thought. And then I mentioned Action 22. I'm going to try to, they're having their Board of Directors meeting and their winter meeting. And then I guess Sally Clark will be at the CCI, and so we can follow up with some other questions later there.
Yeah, I told her I want to talk to her while we're there.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I got for now.
Okay. Commissioner Prince?
I've been busy. I don't have a lot to show for it. Attended the broadband meeting with West Cliff on the 14th. Lot of questions. Finally, it was approved. I think they, their attitude finally was, if we don't move forward, we're moving backwards. So they said, you know, the investment, the initial investment is not tremendously expensive, although they hate to spend taxpayer money if it turns out to be a bust, and that they wasted it. But they felt that it was important enough of a project to go ahead and do it.
That was West Cliff you're talking about?
I'm sorry.
West Cliff, you said?
West Cliff, yes. They have no interest in being in the broadband business. So if, in fact, they are an owner of the fiber coming through, they will most likely contract with a third party to just turn the whole project over to them and receive a royalty or some other payment, and we're actually operating. Let's see, because I went to Denver, the three of us. That was good. I'd like to, if I may, just publicly commend Kara for, that was the first grant she wrote.
Yeah.
In fact, I wrote her in the morning that that was coming along, and we realized that had to be done right then and there. I said, "Kara, you got a minute?" And I brought her to the courtroom, and we had our meeting, and she got briefed on what it was, wrote it that day, got it signed. And thank you, Kara, for well done. Obviously, it worked out well. We got every penny we wanted, so good job.
Thank you.
Which is a good point, because we got to get together next, right?
Right.
And figure out what we're going to do with it.
Exactly. I stopped in and just showed my ugly face to the Custer County Kids Council, just to show that we cared. That's really such an autonomous group that we really don't have a lot to do, other than I just want to let them know that the commissioners knew what was going on and heard about the goodness that they did. And a lot of questions about the roads, obviously, like we all do all the time, and clinic questions that came up a lot, ambulance questions came up a lot, but nothing organized, no meetings. So I'm scheduled for a meeting with the EMS group next month, and they invited me to join their group, and I gratefully, gratefully accepted. So I'll be dealing with ambulance questions like that. We have lots of questions that need to be resolved, which I hope we'll do in the near future. Other than that, I really didn't do anything.
Okay. I'll run through my calendar real quick. On the 14th, with the day after our last Commissioner meeting, I attended the Upper Arkansas Cooperative of Weed Management Association's annual meeting down in Canyon City. I talked to Don Wharton of Reach Air Ambulance. I think that's on the agenda today, so we could discuss that a little further. I also attended the Regional Kids Council meeting down in Canyon City. Laura Lockhart and I went down and attended that meeting. I met their new local director of the Kids Council. I think she starts January 1. Also spoke with Scott Lynn, the five-state regional director for AMR. Visited with him on the phone a little bit. And then I attended a meeting in Colorado Springs with the CU Denver Strategic Planning I was the only representative from Custer County there. Everybody else ended up having conflicts, so I'm glad I went. It happened to be on my way to Denver for the underfunded court commission meeting.
Which one was that, Tom?
Uh, CU Denver is doing a strategic plan for the Fairgrounds and the Saddle Club, and so met with those folks for a couple hours. And then, obviously, attended the underfunded court security commission meeting in Denver, which I'm on, and we sat and listened to 11 presentations. Obviously, as you gentlemen have indicated, Custer County was one of them. I recuse myself during Custer County's presentation, so I was not there to hear that. But obviously, we got a grant award letter this week that said we were awarded that $30,000, so we must have done something right, including your presentation. I asked Commissioner Prince about it, and he thought you did a great job and very personable, and so appreciate that. Thank you.
Good.
I met with Deb Adams to make connections on the basket for the, for Custer County's donating a basket. Well, it's a drawing, actually. Yeah, we're donating a basket to be used in the county drawing for the CCI conference in Colorado Springs next week.
Oh, yeah.
So we've got that. I will secure a, literally, a basket, put it in as well. And so we do need to draft a letter to the Tourism Board and just thank them for that, getting all that put together. Then I submitted, this last, this week, I submitted a grant to the State Internet Portal Authority for...
I don't know what I'm doing.
The purpose of the grant was to cover the expenses of miking up our boardroom. We talked about that, so I think we're all in agreement that we wanted to do that. So I just went ahead and wrote that grant to SIPA. They will meet in December to look at those grants.
How much?
February, I've got the date. $3,600 on it. I've got their dates. February 10th is when they announced, the week of the 10th, they announce those grants, and then they award them in April. So if we really believe that it's something we need to do, and we don't want to wait till April, actually, I'll have to check the wording of the grant now that I think about it.
Like you spend money first, you can't get there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I was thinking it was a reimbursable grant, and I'll have to double check it.
I don't think it is.
So we won't hear about that grant until April. So I don't know if we want to, I can contact them and ask them about that, but it may be, it may not be a reimbursable thing. We may have to wait till we get the grant, so find out about that. So, and then I had, that was my calendar, and I had some other things I wanted to bring up during Commissioner Idens. So if, I don't know, if Kara sent everybody a copy of the payoff from the Saddle Club. They owed on a water bill, they still owe us $2,000 and some dollars, and they paid that off. So Donna sent me a copy. I don't know if you guys got that or not.
I've never seen it.
But anyhow, so, yeah, they did pay that off. I think it was $4,000, $5,000 bucks or something like that.
Like six or something.
Through our agreement with them, they paid that off early. It wasn't due to be paid off, but they thought they needed to get that cleaned up. And then our administrative assistant has requested unpaid time off through the Christmas holidays. I think it will be a total of three or four days, because we have a couple of days in there anyway, so. I'm assuming maybe we can just grant that by consent. I don't know.
Do we have a meeting Friday?
No.
Where you're not meeting at all during that week?
No. So it would be the 20th through the 27th, I believe. And of those days, we're off, three of them anyway, so. I told her that I didn't have a problem with it, but I'd bring it up during the Commissioner meeting. And so by consent, gentlemen, if there are no objections, we'll approve that.
I'll file, sir.
Okay. And then I just wanted to have a discussion on, and it can be fairly brief, because I think it's going to end up being an agenda item or an executive session at some point. But I've checked into our policies, personnel policy, about employees donating unused hours of sick time. We don't have a policy about donating, formally donating unused sick leave upon separation from the county in some kind of a, what they normally call a sick bank. We don't have that. So I think we're going to be faced with having to deal with some decisions about that here as folks retire and want to generously donate their hours, but we just don't have a process in place to deal with that. There's nothing in the personnel policy, so.
Thought I read that they could.
Employees can donate hours between themselves. If you're sick, I can choose to donate some of my time to you, but not to a pool of hours to be dealt out. We don't have a process like that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was reading the policy.
Yeah, I've spoken with Kelly and Donna at some length about this, and there's a couple of issues we do have, and I sent you guys a copy of that with some highlights in it. Employees can carry up to 480 hours of sick leave. And then upon separation from the county, typically retirement, then the county pays out sick leave up to 160 hours. And vacation is 272 hours. So we've got employees that have on the books much more than 480 hours. So I think what we really need to do is probably have a workshop with all the supervisors and go over this and say, "Hey, this is where we're at. Your employees cannot carry more than 480 hours on the books."
Just a suggestion, since we have an already hourly limit, do we really need a workshop? Or can we do that in a staff report meeting?
Well, yeah, I'd rather sit down and do it all at once, because we'll end up having the same conversation five or six times if we do it during staff reports.
Okay.
If we could get all the supervisors together in a room and have a discussion about this, and then, you know, number one, reemphasize the policies that are already in place, and then, number two, if we want to develop this bank of hours, then we can talk about that and probably have some kind of policy.
It's a good thing, isn't it? Most org, most government organizations have hit that bullet, and there's lots of ways to handle it. You've got to set a limit, use it or lose it, and you just, then it goes away.
I think that's what we didn't discuss.
And then others is, you can donate to anybody you want as you're going along, if you're right, and it's already been budgeted, so.
I didn't read it properly. I, when I said you can transfer it, I thought they meant you could put it in the bank also.
Right, yeah.
You're right. I didn't read it.
It'd be good just to formalize.
So, yeah, I just, I don't know. We'll see, and maybe council can have some input on that. I also sent him that highlighted copy, too.
You'll want to make the pool in his pocket. Right. He's got a good idea.
Big force one, I'm not going to be.
One last point.
Okay, all right.
That is pop.
Yeah, I thought I'd send a highlight copy. Maybe not.
You sent a copy, I saw.
I want yours and did my own.
I didn't see it filed by them.
So, yeah, see, and this is an interesting question. Upon separation of employment, employees are compensated for earned unused vacation leave. Well, that's true, up to a point.
Right, because it has a maximum, doesn't it?
Right. Yeah, up to that maximum, which probably should have been referenced again in that sentence, but because I've had somebody say, "Well, it says in there, I can, I can be paid for all my unused vacation time." No, not if you have more than 272 hours.
And if we had a limit where we say after that, it doesn't count, it's gone, you lose it.
So let's just ask Ms. Kara if she could set one up in, say, January, and let's get a workshop, and let's look at this policy, and let's get this hobby in here, and the supervisors and council, and let's talk back, come up with what we feel is the appropriate plan for the county.
After.
We're, we're going to have to make a decision prior to January. I can tell you that.
Because we're at your...
We have an employee getting ready to retire, and he's requested to donate hours that go beyond what is allowed in the policy.
I think he can make that request, and then he can retire, and we could make that determination, and then adhere to his desire or go to the maximum that is approved.
Whatever we decide.
Whatever we decide. So, I mean, I don't think we need to have a policy.
That's true. We might could do it after, post-retirement.
And I'll tell you, honestly, I commend these employees that want to donate that. They're looking to help their fellow employees, and I think that's really...
And the other side of the coin is, they should use it when they got to. That's another reason they...
Not sick leave.
They've come up with, not, not sick, but they, they're normally, people tend to get, think that they can't go, and they end up...
Well, and obviously...
As for our benefit, either they're healthy, they're better.
That's a major burden for us, if someone just comes in and says, you know, "Pay me, you know, $12,000, $15,000 that we didn't have." So let's, why don't we set the meeting up, and let's just put these on the table when we have time, and we'll go through it. That's how we do it.
Yeah, a couple of points. One, by statute, we have to have the money in reserve to cover every employee's...
It's been budgeted already.
So that's in our fund balance. So our auditors make darn sure that they know how many hours we're responsible for, and do we have enough money to pay for those if we have to. So we don't budget forward annually, but it comes out of...
So Kara's going to come up with a date, some day in January. Probably, you want to do it after a meeting would probably be the right thing, and then you don't need to have a special day. Make enough meetings the way it is.
I don't see how we're going to get it done after December.
Not in December.
That's Donna. I don't think on the surface there's any problem with your suggestion about doing it post-separation.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we know what the payout is going to be for that employee based on the number of hours that he has unused. In this case, I can't remember if sick or vacation, I could look, but one of those is below the threshold, and one of them's above the threshold. So obviously, the one above is the one he's interested in donating those hours to, so.
Okay.
So I think that's, I don't know, maybe the mid-January meeting?
Be a good one.
Well...
Or maybe the last.
Let's see. Mid-January, we'll be setting all the dates and appointing all the boards, only.
Yeah.
But we can still do it in the afternoon.
Right.
We're not going to do it during the meeting. So let's have a workshop at 2:00 in the afternoon of the mid-January meeting. That'll give us time, because that may be a long meeting.
Do we have that meeting actually set? I'm looking at my January calendar. The last meeting that I have actually set is January 7th. Do you have anything beyond that?
Shouldn't.
I just, no, I don't have anything after January 7th, sir.
So should we set it for January 7th in the afternoon? Because that's the day we're going to pick.
Well, just when we set it, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Let's just make it so when we do agree on a date, we'll have the workshop.
Sounds great. Okay.
That's what I was saying, whatever that date ends up being.
Midnight.
Yeah. Let's do mid-month then. And then the other thing I wanted to have a discussion with you gentlemen is the possibility, and we haven't gotten there yet, but I wanted to talk about it today because I'm finding myself under the gun. I would like to move the March 3rd and 4th, typically when we would have the March 3rd and 4th meeting, to March 5th and 6th. There is a national association meeting, March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, no, March 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th in Louisiana. So if we could move that date back to the 5th and 6th, normally we would have it the first Tuesday and Wednesday of the month, which is 3rd and 4th. And if we can move that to the 5th and 6th.
I have absolutely no issue with that, other than I think we're a little premature in doing that until we actually start setting the calendar.
We can set the dates based on that.
You know, we moved December's meeting back two days because we were at CCI. And the only problem is I have to register for this convention this month. That's the problem.
What kind of convention is it?
But I can't. It's a National, Sandra Krista, or National Rural Electric Cooperative annual meeting. So it's not county business, personal business, but.
Too bad, because I'd show the county to send me new orders. Those crawfish are unbelievable.
Thank you for letting me know that. I wouldn't have thought about crawfish. So I'm going to look into that.
Good try.
So I indicated to the group that I would have this discussion.
You can go ahead and do it, Tom, because even if it gets groveled up, two of us are here. We can do it. You know, we can handle it any way we can handle it. Or we just move the meeting and all three of us.
My consensus is, let's say, go ahead and do it, and we'll do our best to move the meeting.
And if we can't, we'll figure it out.
Right. Well, if we can't move it, then I will not go. But I'm not going, we're not going to know if we can't.
Go ahead. Both of us have been on the phone in the meeting.
True. True. It's not an option for me to miss the meeting. So I will not go to the national convention if we can't move it. But I couldn't, of course, it's March, for crying out loud. I didn't have any conflicts in March. You guys might have, but I could barely find the March calendar.
If it helps make your decision, and you may have to move it anyway, because I think that March 3rd is election day.
Oh, is it? Okay. So, yeah, by consent, then, we'll make a note when we get ready to do that calendar in January. We look at March 5th and 6th.
Fine.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. That's all I had on Commissioner items, so.
May I ask one more?
Yes.
If I may, I had a note that I've got here. I saw in the newspaper that Extension was, had an ad for an employee. Tell me about that. I was sitting there scratching my head going, I don't think I know about this.
Is it our extension?
Yeah.
Our extension agent.
It is our extension agent.
Are we looking for a new one, or a replacement, or an addition?
Diana Coxinger retired. And I didn't realize this. I thought her last day was the 29th. Her last day was the 20th. And I just missed that in a conversation upstairs. So it kind of caught me. I knew she was going to retire, but it kind of caught me unaware. The day I left to go to Denver for the underfunded courts was her last day. I didn't even get to say goodbye to her. So Gwinnever asked me about the process of filling that. Was it a county position? Was it a CSU position, and so on and so forth? And I said, well, it's definitely a county position. So typically, here's what you would do. You would put out a job vacancy, post it, you know, in the papers, on the county website, go through all that process. So she said, okay. Well, that was around the end of October that we had that conversation. And then I kind of forgot about it.
And she did it. It's okay.
And then she retired. So that's how it ended up in the papers as it should be.
I had my stomach did a flip thinking that maybe Gwinnever was leaving us. I think the world.
Yeah. No, it was for the admin assistant position. And so she gave me the date. I think she's going to try to have that filled by January the 5th or something like that. But, yeah, thanks for asking. I did see that job vacancy notice in the paper as well. So, good point. Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you? So we'll move on. Upper Ark, Commissioner Kanda indicated that he attended that last meeting. I was hoping severely that we could have a meeting with the three counties and Sally Clark on the 11th, one, so I could be there, but two, so it would free up somebody to go to Upper Ark as well. So if we could do that, it'd be huge.
I'll talk to her and ask her.
I've been getting documentation from the courts and filing them here. Two opposers, I just got notice today, two opposers withdrew from that lawsuit, both county residents. And so I suspect it's down now to where you start hiring attorneys.
Well, that's the point I made in the meeting, you know, we've got to have it sooner than later, even though it's to the end of next year, because we're starting to spend money now.
Right. Well, we're not.
No, the posers are.
The posers are, yeah.
And Tim acknowledges that, that he understands.
Yeah, I would assume there'll probably come a time when we either are withdrawn or we withdraw. And I think we've indicated that we're not going to spend thousands and thousands of dollars as an opposer when we're not, when we don't have.
We have no water rights. We have no business.
Yeah, we don't have any standing in the court when it comes down to that. So the court date has been set. I can't quote it to you exactly, but it's in January 1, 2021, right? And so we'll see who's left. You know, it's going to be the last man standing to end up in court with their attorneys. So we'll see.
Seriously considering our presentation where we had an option or two to change things that would make it acceptable. So there's still a chance that'll happen, and we'll know that January.
The next status hearing with the courts is January 31st at 9:30 in the morning. And I think if, I'm not going to dig my calendar out, but I think that's going to be a conflict because I believe we have a BOCC meeting that day.
Which day is that?
January 31st should be the last Friday of January, correct? And that's going to be a conflict. So either we can maybe start late for that meeting and set in on the first 30 minutes of that status conference, or I don't know.
It's not religion, 9 o'clock is the only time.
No. And typically, they're very adamant about those opposers being on record of being on that.
If they're not, they're done.
Status conference, there's really been no direction about how long you have to stay on that conference. There was 80-some people on the last one. So I'm assuming people come on and off of that conference call as they need to, but Judge was very adamant about, you will be on this conference call at the beginning of it, and we're going to drop you as an opposer. So we might consider on that day, starting late. I don't know.
Good. We can talk about it later.
Commissioner Prentice, you have a feeling about that?
I think we owe it to our citizens to be a part of this until such time as we start spending taxpayer money, and then we have to really consider what rights we have in this or not. So I definitely think one, two, or three of us ought to be on the conference call. I have no issue moving the meeting.
I was thinking maybe we can move, and again, we'll deal with it first of January, but if we can move that start time to 10, then if you guys are available, we could all three sit here and be on that status call at 9:30, and then we'll just end it.
Kind of awkward, but I would probably want to attend it for the town of West Cliff and let you guys handle it for the county, if that's acceptable with you.
Sure. And if you were the only one representing, then we could all three sit right here, and you could.
Exactly.
They'll do a roll call.
Right, because West Cliff won't, they don't have a representative other than me.
So, yeah, you could just indicate, you wouldn't physically have to be up there.
No.
I did it on the road.
I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I feel that.
Because we're all going to hear the same information anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah.
West Cliff file as an opposition.
Yes.
They did?
Silver Cliff did not.
I was thinking the Wet Mountain Water sort of handles it for both cities, so I was just curious how they would get support.
And that was a long discussion that took place. I don't want to rehash the whole thing here, but it all is from Round Mountain is where West Cliff Water comes from, should they be an opposer or not. And they felt that it was so important an issue for the entire county that they wanted to do. And there are four or five people on well within the town limits, so they felt it was necessary.
Yeah, one of their big wells, huh? So, okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Attorney items.
At our last meeting, I think I reported that we had an agreement with Colorado College to buy those lots in Silver Cliff for attainable housing. So I went over to Dr. Brenda at Central Colorado Title and Escrow to order the title insurance. And that's in process. It'll be Colorado College's responsibility to pay for the title insurance policy. But I forgot because Brenda's company does, they want to do the closing. When they're issuing the title insurance, they want to do the closing. There's going to be a separate fee for that. I'm guessing around about $400. And I would suggest maybe we offer to split that with Colorado College. There's nothing that says you pay all the closing costs, the usual tax certificates and everything that are needed. I'm sure J.D. will do, since it's the county buying it, there won't be any charge for any of those things. But that's not something we have to decide today, but that's in the process. Let's see, I researched, I researched a contract for, no, it's fine.
Related thing with obtainable housing. I know Charles is on that, so.
Okay, so that's in the process. As soon as we get the title insurance, it's not a closing where everybody's going to have to sit down and sign papers. They'll just, you know, they'll send the deed up to, I'm sure, whoever is going to be signing for Colorado College and get their signatures on it and send it back then to us for recording. I did, they did want to know, or Brenda wanted to know exactly how the county wanted to take title. And I said it'd be Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, is how it should appear on the deed. Excuse me. I reviewed a contract for Kelly. That's on an agenda item. That was pretty routine. I also, finally, I reviewed the agreement from CRCA, the Combined Regional Communications Authority, because since October 1, when we turned over all of our dispatch services, we've been operating on a handshake and all of that. So this is a temporary agreement, which looked fine to me. The dollar numbers, I asked Shannon for his input, because I wasn't sure what, you know, but I assume he's fine with all the numbers. And I'd like to get that on their next agenda for next week, as soon as I hear from Shannon that he's okay with it, for you to sign off on this.
So consideration of a contract with FreeCom.
Right, that's good enough. And even that is just a temporary thing until they have a meeting sometime in June of next year, where it'll all be final, I guess. But we will have a written agreement that ties this over for the.
And, you know, to that end, too, Counselor, we probably need to pursue with Shannon what decision, if any, was made to whether or not we were going to be a voting member of that board, which carries with it a substantial price tag. You buy your way onto that board, unfortunately. But as far as I know, we as commissioners have not had that conversation.
Okay, I wasn't even aware of that.
Yeah.
So it's sort of like the Democrat Party now, you buy your way in.
Counselor, would you like to move on, sir?
All right. Let's see.
Does this exist in plans?
Yeah, I do.
I wrote another letter for Jackie Hobby. We have an individual who last, well, actually earlier this year, I wrote a letter to him. He had a bunch of RVs and trailers out at Lake Dewey's that he was renting out. They weren't hooked up to Septic or anything else. And, you know, we did a cease and desist right away. And instead of him ever contacting Jackie, he just pulled up stakes, and now he's moved them all to another location. So.
Hoping maybe different set of regulations.
Yeah, well, I, because when I go home on Oak Creek grade, I mean, I've been seeing these trailers and RVs and starting to accumulate there. So that's where he's moved to now. So I wrote another letter, and this one is pretty stern. It's sort of a good cop, bad cop. And at this point, you know, Jackie actually, believe it or not, is going to be the good cop.
That is hard to believe.
Because I, I mean, I've unloaded on him, you know, with all kinds, all the possible penalties that could be involved in this, and told him he better contact her right away. And then Jackie will, when she talks to him, assuming he will contact her this time and not move them somewhere else, that she'll, you know, work her magic with, and you know how Jackie can sweet-talk people, and hopefully get this worked out. So I did that. Bob Fulton from Frontier Pathways was here at our previous meeting and invited, you know, attendance at a meeting that he was having last week, and I went, I mean, not on behalf of the county, I was there for dark skies.
That was on the 14th or whatever it was, Wednesday, whatever. I can't remember.
I forget. I know Wilson was there. Marilyn was there.
24th, wasn't it?
Whatever day it was.
The day we were in Denver.
Yeah. But I was there, so I heard, and I didn't, wouldn't hurt, I said, county, you know, put the county down for a $50,000 donation, and I'm sure you guys would approve that.
We'll take that donation anyway. Oh, you meant us donating.
But, I mean, it's, there was a lot of good ideas about how to promote Frontier Pathways, and I think it was useful. And all the people that were there, except for me, had some pretty good suggestions on how to do it. So I was happy to be there. And then, I guess, finally, I've been doing some research on the issue involving hospital district ambulance services, which, where we're still ongoing. By the way, I haven't, I assume that letter was delivered. I haven't heard back on it.
You know, that is a great question. I don't think we did. Because we agreed, I thought we agreed, once the letter was finalized, we would then make a decision to send it. But maybe I had my wires crossed up. I don't think we sent that letter.
I had suggested, maybe even to Kara, hand-deliver it over to get it to them as soon as possible, but I may be wrong. Anyway, I did more research, and the issue really was how do you terminate a mill levy? That's what I was interested. So I did that research and then the taxation and special districts and everything. And I prepared a confidential memo that I sent to the three of you a couple of days ago. And we have an executive session scheduled at the end of this meeting today for further legal advice and discussion. Let's see, I guess that's everything I need to report, then.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I don't believe that letter's been sent.
Okay. Well, then, we, that's why we responded, even though it did appear in the papers and everything, as to what the substance was of the meeting and what we discussed and everything. But.
We need to follow up.
Okay. And, well, we'll talk about it in the executive session. It all got to tie in together, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, it's it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I forgot to mention two other things. From the airport point of view, there's one other, there's one car that's still out there. There's a Saab. Anybody know one? One of Saab's cheap. Hasn't been claimed, and we're going to have to figure out whether we're impounding it and doing whatever we do with it. Once we follow through, I'll talk to.
Yeah, because I've been in on that, those emails that we've been receiving. It's a terrorism issue now.
Well, yeah, I know. It's crazy. So, anyway.
Have you talked to Jackie about it?
I'm going to go talk to her.
Well, I know who knows.
Yeah, I want to figure that out. The other one is a good one. Conkelman sent me a note and has asked us to participate in a meeting the week of the 16th on restoring the Wetmore phones. And what he's doing, I'll read to you. Central Link's been working on a plan to submit a broadband fund grant application as an opportunity to restore the phone service to the area around McKenzie Junction, while bringing additional fiber to the county. In other words, it's another CAF kind of a grant to add more people. He said, I'd like to get everyone together again to discuss the proposal and shared funding opportunities, meaning Forest Service, all the guys that have rights of ways, Sea Dog, et cetera. And he's asking for the December the 16th, work it out. We'll set up a meeting place probably back down at the Bowman Alley or somewhere, or in the library, get the people together to discuss what he's got in mind. So why don't you guys send me some dates?
Well, I already sent Conkelman my reply.
Send him the reply.
Kristy Doon sent her reply to him, and Kathy Garcia did as well.
Looking for everybody else's inputs, so wanted to make sure we got it down.
Yeah, so I responded to him.
I hadn't seen, I saw Garcia's reply.
Did you get a, did he have a date, specific date?
No, we're going to set that up.
He asked for the week of the 16th, I believe.
Available times. He's looking at windows, people that are available. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, good. Admin assistant?
Just thank God for letting me get time off. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Public comment, if you have anything you'd like to visit with the commissioners about that's not on the agenda today, now would be the time to do that. Yes, sir. Mr. Rob?
Yes, sir. Rob Klein from the Centennial Ranch. The question I have for you guys is, are the subdivisions, and I'll speak for just the Centennial Ranch, are they bound by the statutes, the subdivision regulations, the fire protection plan, and the wildlife protection plan? And the reason I'm asking that is because I personally bought the fire truck, number 32, up there in the hangar up there. So I'm the owner of that. Now, the lease is up in 20 January of 2020 here. Now, the lease is up in 20 January of 2020 here, and we had a meeting at the, the fire station down here in West Cliff, I believe on the 13th of November, and it was discussed that the board members supposedly are trying to pin the rap on the Wet Mountain Fire Department to come up with the funds to reimburse me, which I think is a bunch of BS personally, because if this particular fire substation is involved in just the four communities down the south end, I think just the south end should be responsible for the payment to reimburse me for that, and it comes out to like about between $28 and $30 per lot for each homeowner that's involved in that particular substation. So I don't think the county should be involved in dishing up any kind of funds at all, I mean, if we're gonna be a community, then let's be the community and throw in a supreme pizza price with a soda to pay for this thing, and stay away from the mill levy, and pulling, pulling money out of the West Cliff funds or wherever it might come from. The other question I have for you is.
Wait, before you do that.
Okay.
The board members, meaning what board members?
The board members that were at the meeting with the fire department on the 13th. They all stood up and pretty much spoke their piece mainly against the fire department, which is totally BS.
And what board is that?
The boards of Kerma Viti.
The Kernaverty Board?
Timber Ridge, Centennial Ranch, and I believe the, the airport one, West.
Silver West.
Talking about HOA.
It's the HOA boards, that's why I wanted to clarify.
The HOA board, oh, yeah, right, right.
And it was a government board.
Right, no, the HOA, HOA boards, correct.
Okay, I'm with you.
Now, they went, they went behind closed doors and spoke whatever they were speaking about, but, but then they, then they came back in, more or less, tried to get the shaft towards the Wet Mountain Fire Department for not doing anything during this two-year interim of the, of the lease that I, that I was, that I was charging the, the people, one dollar a year is all it was, you know what I mean, but now the time has come up to, they gotta step up or shut up, basically, you know what I mean? And I'm not talking about the Wet Mountain Fire Department, I mean, they spent.
You're talking about your board members.
Right, the boards itself, the five, the four boards that are involved, because the, the county, I would assume the funds are coming from the county, they're paying for, you know, upkeep on the vehicle, fuel, training, and, and actually risking their lives, so to me, $28 per head, or $30 per head is well worth it.
We'll address that. Go ahead with your other point, and then we'll clear up a couple of things, yeah.
And the other points I'm concerned, concerned about is the statutes clearly state that in a subdivision, you're supposed to have ingress and egress and support of that property, of that unit. The subdivision regulations, but I don't know if they hold true to 35 Acre Lots or better, but the subdivision regulations also specify for emergency vehicles, they're supposed to be required to have ingress and egress. So that's another thing I'm bringing up, and in snow out there, I'm not saying that should be done like right away, but, I mean, last year we were stuck, we were stranded up there for like close to four months, which is, which is bogus to me. I mean, I didn't come out here, you know, to have that happen, God forbid, there was an emergency out there, you know, I want somebody to come in there and get us, and that, that's not happening, and the boards are taking no responsibility for that whatsoever. Once again, I'm speaking for the Centennial Ranch, and African Mountain Ranch Association.
Okay, all right.
Now, one more thing, I also believe the wildlife protection plan specifies similar, and I do have a meeting with the ELM, I guess that's where it is, Meredith?
Yeah, Meredith, OEM.
Yeah, OEM, okay, yeah. Next week on same situation, but that's what, that's all I have.
Well, let's see if we can bring a little clarity to a couple of things, and gentlemen, jump in whenever you deem appropriate. Number one, I want to say this, that I admire you for stepping up, I can't believe it's been two years already.
Right, right.
When the fire department was looking for a way to pay for this fire truck, man, you stepped up, knocked one over the fence, and said, you know what, you guys, I'll do it, I'll help you. So I appreciate that, and I know the fire department did as well. Did this lease that you spoke of, who is that lease with? The fire department? Or, I didn't think it was with the HOAs.
No, no, it's not.
Okay, all right.
It was supposed to be anonymous, which it was way at the beginning, I was working with Dave Townsend.
Right.
You know, behind the, you know, behind the thing, and with Johnny from the Kerma Viti at that particular time.
Yeah.
So, but I don't think Johnny even doing that, whether he did or not, I don't know, nor do I care.
Yeah.
So the dealing I was doing with was mainly with Dave Townsend and the fire department.
Right, so they're leasing it.
It, I'll tell you right now. Lease agreement is between the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, all right. So a couple of things that I think you may understand, but if you do, I didn't pick up on that, so I want to try to bring some clarity to that. The county government has nothing to do with what you're talking about, with the exception of, we agreed to provide a place to house that fire truck, that is it. We have no financial burden whatsoever or concern with the fire truck. The fire department is not part of the county government. The fire department is a specially taxed entity, autonomous of any county government, nothing to do with the county whatsoever.
It's a district like the school district's a district.
All right, so wait, period, where do their funds come from then?
They collect a mill levy tax from the citizens.
That's my point, and really, the mill levy, I, I would not like to see it go up, because it don't even make sense to me that, price it with damn pizza, come on, guys, you know what I mean?
Okay, so let me, let me speak to that. So I get the idea that you're wanting to kind of bring the HOA people into this.
They've been into it.
Not.
They're sitting vacant, they, you know, they're sitting under dust.
Okay, but not with your lease agreement, correct? They have, the HOAs, before you mentioned, have nothing to do with this fire truck, the financial responsibility for a fire truck.
Right, right.
Because that was a lease agreement between you and the fire department, right? I gather now that you're, you're thinking that the HOA should step up.
No, they were involved in, they were supposed to try to get funds from them to help the fire department.
Right.
You know, during this whole process and everything, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, I mean, they failed miserably.
Well, and that's.
Without a shadow of a doubt.
Here's the other point.
Without a shadow of a doubt.
That I think we as commissioners need to make, is that generally speaking, county government has absolutely zero to do with homeowners associations. I mean, we're not gonna tell them, yeah, you need to do this, that is none of our business. If they decide they want to do it, that's fine, that's between them, you, and the fire department.
Does the fire department approach you guys as far as the mill levy goes, that is gonna affect everyone sitting right here, plus?
No, we have nothing to do with that.
Wow.
Nothing to do with that. The, a board member from the fire department called me and told me that this situation was arising, obviously I wasn't at the meeting you spoke of where the homeowners association has met with the fire department, and he wanted to make sure I understood, which I did, but he just said, hey, I just need to tell you this, that this fire truck is, has nothing to do with the county. I said, no, it doesn't, it shouldn't, and it's better than on that, because we had no part and parcel to that.
Right.
So I think I get where you're coming from, I don't mean to sound rude, but.
You're out of the loop.
Well, yeah, we're, we're a nonentity.
Yeah, you need to get your boards to work and negotiate that with the fire department.
Hopeless, they don't, they don't give a damn.
So do they, you know, but it depends on how you handle it, so you're right.
Now.
If they want a fire truck, they're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it.
We're on record and being live streamed, so if you don't want to answer this question, feel free not to.
Absolutely, I'm here.
I did not ask the board member what the balance on the fire truck was, I thought it was $32,000.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Plus the Wet Mountain Fire Department put in, I think, over 10 grand.
Right, upgrade.
To upgrade it and do the whole thing, exactly.
So as it stands, you're, you've basically indicated to the fire department that you want to be paid off, that the lease has matured.
Correct.
And you want to be paid off.
Correct.
And from where I sit, that is a fire department decision. They're gonna have to decide how, well, number one, if, they don't really have any choice, right? And secondly, how. I don't think the how part of that is gonna require an additional mill levy increase, I can't imagine that.
Hold on.
But I'm speak, I'm not speaking for the fire department. I just, you asked, hey, does it involve a mill levy increase, and my opinion is, no, I don't believe it would.
I'm hoping not.
Yeah.
Or, or you could go to your homeowner's association, like you suggested, the cost of a pizza, and have a separate assessment from homeowners to pay you off.
And I brought that up.
And that certainly may, I mean, that's who's benefiting from this, that makes a lot of sense.
He's not getting any track.
I get it, I get it, but those are the alternatives.
They don't have the going as part of the French to, they're all afraid, it's all, it's all political, you know?
Yeah.
I'm the president, or I'm the, whatever the case is.
Right.
You know, why approach the members and let them know that, you know, they dropped, they dropped the ball during this two-year timeframe? I mean, in two-year timeframe, they could have $14 each, now up to $28 each, so, you know, they sit vacant in their responsibilities to the members, and also to our health, safety, and general welfare when we're out there, you know what I'm saying?
So that's, that's between you and them now.
Yeah, well.
You need to take it to them.
Okay.
I've been the president of a homeowner's association before, I understand what you're going through, but it's up to you to deal with that, and if the fire department, they're kind of caught too, if they, if they're not gonna get paid for it, they, they have the option of pulling the fire truck out.
That's right.
You can go put it in on a display in a museum somewhere, but that's between one of them.
But, well, and really, it's between you and the fire department.
That's what I mean.
The HOAs is extraneous to the legal part of the lease and all of that, so.
Yeah.
They, they might be a potential source.
Right.
In my opinion, but really, it's between you and the fire department.
Because I just wanted to bring it up just to be sure that no one's gonna get the shaft here, because of our stupidity down the south end, you know what I'm saying?
We'll stay tuned and we'll watch the papers for the fireworks.
Can I address his other question?
Was there two questions or?
Yeah.
Well, there was a question about ingress and egress.
Correct.
You're right, the, a subdivision does have to have ingress and egress, which means roads that have been approved by the county, so you can get in, those roads are approved for ingress and egress, it's up to the HOA for most of those roads to keep those roads open in the wintertime. The county, the county is obligated, we have a few roads in, in Kernaverty, very few down Centennial Ranch.
Just the three miles, Centennial Ranch Road.
Right, right. Those three miles.
That we, that's, it's the county's responsibility, but that's not the same as ingress and egress. Ingress and egress is the legal right on a road to get to your property.
To your subdivision, man, their subdivision.
Who maintains, it's a whole nother.
Yeah, the maintenance of the roads is a separate issue.
Well, that's a separate homeowners' board.
Bull Domingo does all of their own roads, for instance, they, you know, the county doesn't do anything, and Bull Domingo's up.
So God forbid, something happens out there, where something goes wrong, who's gonna be responsible? The HOAs themselves, okay?
And the county's plowing the snow right up to that entrance, or whatever the agreement, where the county's responsibility ends, and then it's up to you guys or them to open it up the rest of the way.
Yeah, and in Centennial, you're right, the first three miles of Centennial Ranch Road off of Highway 69.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
From there on.
Forget about it, yeah, it's hopeless, yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 all right, sir, thank you, appreciate that.
Was there, was there a third one?
No, it's snow removal and egress and ingress, yeah. Okay, anything, anything else, public comment that's not on the agenda? Rob, thank you, appreciate your time and willingness to come in. Again, thanks for your efforts in the beginning of this, because they were up against it when it come to financing the fire truck.
Well, I mean, you know, just, just to chuck the bull a little bit here, what also makes me really perturbed is not one of those four association boards came to me and says, can we extend this to allow us time for the special assessment, or whatever the case is, so right away, pretty much, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Unfinished business gentleman?
No, sir.
Nor do I.
No.
We move on, new business, public comment will also be allowed on any of these new business items that we will be voting on. First is review of the vouchers and sign the checks.
Did you ask Karen if she had anything?
I did, yeah, she just thanked us for unpaid time off.
Thank you, that's right.
Yeah. I would move that we approve the vouchers for November 2019, as presented. Been moving the second to approve the vouchers discussion. I had some, yes.
Let me just ask one question, if you don't mind, sorry for the interruption, but since we are part of the subdivision, are we still part of what we're discussing now? Are we considered in part of this, or we're not?
Uh, not typically, about the vouchers.
Or about anything the board is discussing?
You're a city, you're a citizen.
Yeah, as a citizen, forget the HOA.
County resident.
Yeah, HOA doesn't have anything to do with it, but if it's a citizen, yeah, I will ask for public comment before we vote on these vouchers.
Okay.
So if something comes up, yeah, or anything on that agenda, I will ask for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I went through these, I had some questions, I had about six or seven questions, actually, I think I got most of those answered, there were a couple of things I did want to bring to the forefront. The extension voucher of $11,000 certainly was out of the norm, that is a compilation of the first three quarters of 2019 for our payments to CSU. I don't know why we were never vouchered for that, CSU never said, hey, you guys owe us money, so that's why that is three times bigger than it normally is, is because that covers the first three quarters of 2019 for our share of the extension salary.
Yeah.
Extension director's salary, okay? We pay 20% of that.
Pay 20%.
And then Search and Rescue had a fairly large voucher as well, I asked about that, that was strictly a pass-through thing, which I think even in the vouchers, it did say pass-through. EPR grant continues to pay those expenses, I wasn't sure about that. Did you see the voucher for the postal machine? I thought, oh my gosh.
I did not see that.
Okay, it was 2,000 bucks, and I thought, oh, I hope that's not a month, it's not, pays that when we subscribe to that postal machine, basically, so whenever our allotted subscription runs up, then we re-subscribe for more, and that's, Donna wasn't even sure if it was two months or three, I don't know, Kelly, you may have some input on that, but.
Is that the postage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a subscription thing.
Yeah.
It's not a monthly fee, it's just we.
It just depends on how fast we go through that postage, what we're, what we're doing, yeah.
Right, yeah, and then I'm sure you saw, gentlemen, the, the final payments on the two Mack trucks, 71,000, the lease purchase agreement, so those are cleaned up. And then I had another, I meant to get ahold of Sheriff Biley this morning, and I failed to do that, but Clint mentioned FreeCom, color, southern Colorado, Colorado Regional Resource.
Combined Regional Communications Authority.
Thank you, sir, which we call FreeCom, which is a lot easier. I didn't realize what the final outcome of our agreement with FreeCom was, but we're paying the salary of two dispatchers down there, so that's what that amount was about on the emergency services payroll, was for those two dispatchers, so. Got my question answered there. And then, Mr. Jay, if, obviously, I'm sure you saw, the monthly voucher for the tourism board was nor, larger typically than normal, but I get that, so, but the point is, and I think Ms. Donna is gonna follow up with the tourism board, they have a remaining balance, and it's not much. Their, their voucher this month was 7,200 bucks, and I think that left $1,200 in their budget to expend, so Donna was gonna just remind them of that, that they didn't overextend that budget, so if you happen to be at a meeting or whatever, I want to carry that message forward, but that's the only thing I had in those vouchers that I thought, I didn't understand a couple of them, and so. Other discussion?
No.
Public comment, I'll just say real quick to it, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do this monthly, and, and I just have to make myself a note, these vouchers total 525,649.76. Public comment, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Posnay, motion carried. Consideration of the Reach Agreement is the next item on the biz, on the agenda, let Let me give you a little update from where I'm coming from, and then if we need to do something different, we can. So, Reach is the name of an air ambulance company based out of California. We have been discussing about the possibility, would you check, make sure, I'm sorry. Paying Reach Air Ambulance for a countywide subscription to cover air transport for emergencies for every resident in the county, and to be negotiated every human in the county at any given time throughout a year, which really means that somebody was traveling through our county and required air ambulance service, that Reach would provide that under our county municipal site plan. So, I spoke with Don Wharton about that, I asked him to send me something prior to this meeting, I have not received it yet, but we did go over some details on the telephone, and I can share those with you if you want. I'm certainly not in a position yet to vote on this. I think it was consideration of, but that just allowed us to vote if we felt the need, so, thank you, ma'am.
What was the fee?
Twenty thousand dollars, countywide.
For a year?
For a year, that's an annual assessment. The company said that they were very open, we could pay that monthly, quarterly, semi-annually or annually, they really didn't care, didn't matter to them. Their, and I know we've had this conversation before, their, their basic guarantee is that if a patient needed that level of care, and that that air asset was available, they would guarantee absolutely zero dollars out of pocket for any resident of the county or anybody traveling through the county at the time of a major accident.
Who determines?
Great question, so who determines that? And I asked him that, I said, who determines the level of care and the appropriate transport? He said, the highest caregiver on the scene, or that person and the highest caregiver on the air asset would make a combined decision. Is this critical enough to have air ambulance? That's the conversation I had, that was always held that.
This is out of Salida, excuse me.
Out of Salida, that's correct, out of Salida. Yes, sir, Rob, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Let's go ahead.
I have a question for you, I mean, I'm already paying sixty-five dollars a year, so.
Good point.
Now, I don't know if anybody else in the whole community is doing the same thing, but.
Sure, they are.
Would there be possibly, maybe, could we put donations towards that twenty thousand dollars or whatever the case is, like you were talking about, once again, keeping the mill levy down or whatever, however you guys determine the funding part of it?
Good point, and I had a conversation with them about that. Right now, there's eighty-five or eighty-six citizens in the county that subscribe to Reach Air Ambulance.
And that's only if, maybe the other ones don't even know about it either.
That's right, or there, there are other people who may subscribe to other air ambulances, but they told us, told me, there were eighty-five or eighty-six people currently paying that sixty-five dollars a month or whatever it is, I don't know, something like that.
A year.
A year, I mean, sorry, yeah, a year. I said, what about those folks? He said, well, that's going to be a duplicity of services, you're going to pay for them, they're paying for themselves, but he said, here's the difference. He said, if you're paying, if the county has a subscription that covers them, it's for this county only. If, I'll use these guys for example, I know you don't mind because you've mentioned it publicly before, they subscribe to that, they are covered globally. Ours would not, it's only county, you have to be within the confines of the county. He said, if, and I said, they've been here, we talked to them here, the commissioners did at a prior meeting, they understand Custer County, they know where we're at, they said, if you had somebody two miles south of the county line, or two miles east of the county line, guarantee you, we will service those folks. He said, now, will we fly to Gardner or to Walsenburg? No, but we understand that we can't just draw a line on a map and say, sorry, you're, you're five hundred feet past, and I've got a story about that I could share with you, yes, ma'am.
And point of order, they'll come.
Pardon?
They'll come.
They will be here if they all agree.
Well, it's whether, it's who pays for it.
Right.
It's not, we're two miles outside, so they won't come.
Oh, they'd still go, that's right, yeah, in my example, yeah.
Anybody in this, anybody anywhere that calls, if they can come, they'll come.
Yes, now, they wouldn't say, we're not flying down there.
He still has a question.
I know, I know, I'm aware of that, yeah. So, the point was, to answer your question, Rob, that there would be a little duplicity, but the offset of that is, if it's sixty-five dollars a year for you, we would be contributing on the average another five dollars a year.
And once again, I don't think, think they're going to come out here in a blizzard or whatever, high winds or anything, I mean, I don't know.
That was the other thing, whether.
Right, permitting.
Permitting, they would fly, just like any others, yeah, yeah, Jack's point's right, I mean, they'll fly to anyone.
Right.
It's, who ends up paying for it?
Will you get billed or will you not?
That's right, all right, yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment, I used them about three years ago, I was up here in the mountains looking at a property, and had to be medevac, and thank God for search and rescue, they got me out of the mountains, and then the helicopter took me to Colorado Springs Hospital, I broke my back, and they billed me forty-three thousand dollars for that helicopter trip, and I still, to this day, owe them forty-three thousand dollars, so I now have it, but it also, when you're talking about duplicity and whatnot, it covers my family also.
Right, yeah, and I didn't mention that, yeah.
But it's the greatest insurance, usually.
Yeah, thanks, JR, I mean, that's a great testimony, I mean, you know, they should pay you to advertise for them, because that's exactly right, I know that.
Forty-three thousand?
Yeah, you and I, yeah, pay you forty-three thousand dollars, one-time fee, yeah.
They do take fifty dollars a month, so.
But I know you and I've had this conversation, JR, and I...
I've been there, done that with my daughter.
Yeah, so, I, I know, we've talked about it some, I think we probably all kind of feel the same way about it, but it's risk management, it's risk insurance. The question is, who should bear that? And, and that's the philosophical question that we're going to have to wrestle with eventually, but yeah, thanks, JR, I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am?
I spoke to Reach about six months ago, it was a bit confusing to extract information when I like fact-based, not just, oh, sure, say, show me where. We brought the matter about an ambulance would be called in to Reach if there's an authorized or a credible source, as well as the individual. If an individual, let's say I think I'm having a heart attack, if I call directly, it may not be covered.
It may not, but if they determine that...
Or you might have to wait for the sheriff's department, if time is up, the yeses, and the sheriff can't get to you in an hour, whatever, it's just something I was really aware of. Medicare also will cover some of that expense, but you won't get much.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, again, what I think Wilson was alluding to, is who makes the determination? Anybody can call for an air asset, private, it doesn't have to be a medical service provider. A private citizen can call and request flight, which really is flight for life, which is not what we're talking about, but air, that's why I try to say, an air asset. Now, whether or not they will pay that, my understanding in my conversation was, if a private individual, that's what I thought you were going to ask, if a private individual requested Reach, would they pay? If Reach determines that this is a life safety issue that needs an air asset, then yes, that would be covered.
But if you happen to have gas, and it feels like a heart attack.
Exactly, then...
You don't know, all you know is you think you're going to die.
I don't think there's going to be a thousand percent guarantee, even in that written contract that's going to cover every possible scenario, but until we get the written proposed contracts from them, I think, you know, we're, we're still in the...
And it is only sixty-five dollars a year as well.
Per person, correct.
No.
Per family, per family. Sorry, per subscription, yeah, which covers every member of that family, as well as this would on this, they call it a municipal site plan, we'd be the first county to subscribe to that service. They have two other municipalities in Colorado that are currently subscribing, but we would be the first county. But yes, it would cover every, and this is what he said, the contract would say, every human being in your county on any given day. Didn't matter whether you lived here or not, see, that's what we were getting at, we felt that was important to have that in the language of that contract, so, any age, doesn't matter, and as many times as you need it, you might have three, God forbid, air transports in one year, they would be covered, yes, sir.
The reality is that dispatch or the ambulance crew would put air assets in the air probably before they even got on scene. For something like gas, you know, they're going to, they're going to do a differential diagnosis even before they get there, but you know emergencies, or trained staff knows emergencies that require air assets.
I would assume Reach would probably either through dispatch or medical service providers have that conversation, and if they do say, by all parent appearances, man, this is a serious heart attack, we're flying, it ends up not being, then I'm assuming all bets would be off.
Well, the problem I have with that is, like we were just discussing before, about us being snowed in and not being able to get in and out, I mean, medical emergency, whether it be the sheriff, EMT people, whatever, they just can't get in, you know?
Right.
What happens then, you know what I'm saying, so...
Yeah, and I, I know this will sound rude, that falls back on the homeowner.
I agree.
I think it's been said, probably not a lot publicly, there's an inherent risk that you take if you move here and buy property in the middle of nowhere in our county, it's incumbent upon the homeowner to deal with that.
Right.
And that's, that doesn't, that's not very popular with a lot of people in this county, but I think it truly is the reality, so, okay.
So, what are we going to do here, because we, it's...
Well, I think...
Think we're ready to talk? We, we need...
No, as I indicated, I think as commissioners, the next step for us is to look at a proposed contract.
Well, and what are, we got to look at the pros and cons of doing it in this county.
I would like, if I may.
Certainly.
I've really pushed for this, I was really in favor of it, and I still am. People move here, they understand what they're moving to, or they should, they do their research and all, they understand that our clinic is very limited on the services they can provide, our ambulances will never take you to our clinic, and people need to understand that, they will take you to a hospital somewhere else, and that we're just not close to an emergency service. The county is in the business of the health and safety of our citizens, and I think we have budgeted money for this in our community outreach, because we asked about how their money would be, where would it come from, and I agree, it's only sixty-five dollars a year, however, you need to deal with some of the people that I deal with all the time, that sixty-five dollars is the difference between groceries and medication, and the last thing they're going to worry about is something that they may or may not need down the road. I just feel considering our rural aspect in this county and lack of close-by medical services, it would be, it would be, in, I think it would be totally appropriate for this county to take on the task of providing one level higher than this county already provides, we already provide ambulance service, I'm talking countywide, I'm not talking about the commissioners, we already do it, for a very nominal fee per person to take this on, so, we talked about funding it, it would take our outreach budget, some of it from two thousand nineteen, and then the balance of it from two thousand twenty, so, I would just like to suggest that if we do something, or we take a vote on whether to do this or not, we do it in December, so that we can have the funds available to pay if it's an affirmative vote, if it's not an affirmative vote, that's fine too, but I would just like to move forward, but I, I feel very comfortable doing this, you know, every time I speak, I say, is this the right thing for the taxpayers? In my mind, this is.
Good, good, yes, sir.
I got something on that, sorry for a little interruption, but like, like you were just saying, I mean, God forbid, I mean, you guys, I think the county would know what people can and can't afford, you know, dishing out the sixty-five dollars, and if that's the case, let the community get together, and maybe, you know, I'm actually got another guy might have a hundred dollars laying around or whatever, we'll put the money in for those particular people, whatever, I, I just don't like the mill levies going up and the taxes going up, I...
This is not a tax issue. Let me, let me, maybe I didn't make this clear, we have already allocated money for two thousand nineteen, we have a proposed budget for two thousand twenty, hasn't been finalized yet, there is money already allocated, we call it outreach, that the commissioners discretionary funds to help organizations or communities or areas that we feel is worthy of helping the citizens of this county. I'm just proposing to my fellow commissioners, and I'm doing it live, that this would be a good use of those funds, that's where I'm coming from. There would be no additional taxes to anybody, it's already been allocated. The question would be, if you'd like to donate money to that, trust me, these commissioners, I'm not speaking for them, this commissioner would say, thank you very much, not no thank you.
I agree.
But we're not going to go fundraise for this, that is not what we do.
And you shouldn't have to.
Yeah.
We would, but we have, the money is already allocated, it just depends on how we choose to, to spend it for the benefit of the citizens, that's where this comes from. So, there's no additional tax, no additional levies, no additional anything, it would just be, is this worthy enough for us to spend our money on, or should we save it and spend it elsewhere?
I mean, even an article in the paper or something like that, people know what's going on or something like that.
We have both papers sitting here right now, so, I suspect...
Well, timeout in here, second thing, you're, you're right.
I suspect they'll say something, but go ahead.
You're, you're right, I mean, I mean, say a couple things, because we're not really ready to debate this, I don't think, right now, because I have other thoughts too, because in, in fact, it is taxpayer money, we just allocate it, and it, and it still is something that we can't do somewhere else if we allocate it for this, so, that's, that's still a taxpayer issue. And also, where do you draw the line? We have a hospital district that is set up to tax people accordingly for the medical care that the county should be taking care of, and they're willingly, the ambulance service is one of them, this could be another one for that as well, and that way you're doing it. And we run the risk of double paying twice, because you've got a policy, and so you're going to pay something else with something that we could have done with the funds differently, that's all. So, we got to think through the whole thing, and, and it's not necessarily, I don't think the county government was set up to supply medical care to everybody, although we want to help everybody, so we set up emergency services to get people moved and all those kinds of things, but as far as insurance goes, that's a whole different thing, that's like Medicare, you know, do we want to take that on as a county, and where do you draw the lines in the future? You got to look at the, the bigger picture, and that's why it would be, I would think we'd get more people involved, and I like the idea, and I know people will come for something like this, pretty, pretty cool deal for the cheapest it is, maybe there's other ways to raise the money, and, and, and everybody has a dog in the fight, and, you know, we don't know better than everybody, you know, all the time. So, anyway, something we can talk about.
I understand what you're trying to tell me.
Well, all I'm trying to tell you...
I'm really sorry.
What you're just trying to tell us is, we have the money allocated to do this, we don't, we have money that we can use if we elected to do that.
We have money that we have allocated to this.
Is it, is it something that the county will always budget in the future? Because that's what we're getting ourselves into if we decide to do that, so we, we just got to make, you know, are we trying to do a medical, something from a medical point of view for the county? We have never done that before.
This is not a medical, this is an adjunct to our ambulance service. It's the way I look at it, and you certainly local look at it differently. I mean, I'm not trying to convince you, I was just giving my opinion on how I feel about it.
And I was just telling you how nice it is.
Yeah, I think...
That's, that's why we talk, and by the way, for you that have never been here before, this is the only time we get to talk together.
I think, to that vein, Commissioner Canada, it is, now is a time that we can have some discussion, we don't have to have it all today, but I struggle a little with trying to make a decision in December, only to this extent, that if we have a proposed contract that we can look at, if that doesn't happen, then I'm not prepared to vote on it.
I can agree with that, I can agree with that, assuming we have it.
And that being said, I'll reach out to Don again and say, if you are serious about this, then we need a proposed contract that we can look at, so we can make an informed decision.
You bet.
Are we going to, it's back to that classic, are we going to get an opinion from everybody in the citizen, in the county? No, we're not, we're going to have to take what input we can get, we have to take what we believe is right for this county and move forward from there. So, with that being said, again, that's why I put it on here, so we can have, continue to have a conversation about it, I will reach out to them again and request a proposed contract.
You made a statement, or somebody did, there's only one other municipality doing this, so we ought to figure out why there's only one.
Yeah, there's two, and I wanted to speak to that real quick, LaHunta, the municipality of LaHunta, has a contract with Reach, a municipal site plan, and the town of Eads has a municipal site plan, which I thought was interesting, so I reached out to the, the city manager of LaHunta and had a good conversation with him, they're paying nineteen thousand dollars a year, and right away, I wanted to say, wait a minute, and he told me, it's really not a numbers equal dollars thing with Reach. me, it's really not a numbers equal dollars thing with Reach, even though they quoted us a figure based on the population of our county, but you can't compare that, they got 7,800, no, 17,000 people in LaHunta, I said, well, crying out loud, that's about what we're gonna pay for, yeah, he said, but listen, he said, you can't compare those, I shouldn't have ever told you that, because we paid for a building to house their air asset in, and we provide housing for their people, I mean, it's just, he said, that's totally different than what you're talking about. He said, if you're trying to get Reach to bring a helicopter and station it in Custer County, then that's a whole nother ballgame. I said, well, that's not what we're talking about. So he said, yeah, forget that dollar to person comparison, because it's just not accurate.
The other question, maybe you already asked him, is there another company that does the same thing?
There are other companies that do this, but not in this part of the US, the west coast has a couple, and the north...
Flight for Life is not involved?
Pardon me?
The Flight for Life.
Well, Flight for Life is a whole nother ballgame, I've tried not to directly compare those two, I don't know if Flight for Life has this same plan or not, I haven't heard of it if they do, but I can't speak to that. The city manager down there told me that frequently, people stop him on the street and thank him for his leadership in that decision to cover their municipality with Reach, but they're having a problem, because there's people that live out in the county that have a LaHuna address, mailing address, so he said, we're struggling with that too, trying to define who's eligible and who isn't eligible, so they have county employees that do not live in the town of LaHunta, should they be covered or not, and so they're working through that as well, but he just spoke very highly of the whole process, and he thought it was of great value to their citizens. So, other public comment about that, we're not gonna vote, so probably move on, actually, but I'll reach out to Westwarden, and we'll try to get that back on the agenda for December. Consideration of Rotary Request for Funding is our next item, businessman, please come forward, how are you? Ms. Shelley Pinkoff, representing Rotary today.
Hi, Shelley.
Hi.
How are ya?
Good.
Gotta shake my hand to you.
Please have a seat, yes ma'am, you're more than welcome to. So we got your letter, let me pull it up real quick, I had a question about that, because I'm always trying to figure out stuff that, oops, wrong one. Yeah, it's just junk mail. This is what my question was.
Okay.
Administrator slash dispatcher.
Yes.
So you dispatched the Rotary van?
Yes.
Out of your home?
Out of my home, yes. When I took on the job, we tried to split up the job, administrator who did all the reports, all the, and then I was just doing the dispatching, but it just really goes hand in hand. And so I do all the grant writing, I do all the communication with volunteer drivers, and it's a great job.
Okay.
It allows me to go to football games and basketball games.
You're a paid position.
I am, I am the only paid position in our organization, we've been a nonprofit since, I believe, 2006, we do many rides out of, our main goal is to get people to their doctor's appointments, and we keep with that mission, we do a lot of transportation to the Colorado Springs Airport, people have figured out the shuttle between Denver and Springs, and so around this time of year, we do a lot of Colorado Springs rides.
It's more in medical, it's a variety of everything.
Yes, and then the other problem people have is they are ambulanced to Pueblo, and then they have no way to get home. Those are very tricky rides for us, because being that we're volunteer driven, I have to be very diligent in my scheduling, and we only have two all-wheel drive vehicles right now, so we pick those people up, if they call from Pueblo, I'm stuck at the hospital, a lot of times, we can work it out and go get them.
But to a point, your request today is not to pay for your salary.
No.
I wanted to make that clear.
No, it is not.
Even though you are a paid person, this has nothing to do with that.
No.
Okay, so your request, and this is kind of for the record, because not everybody can see this, you're requesting $2,500?
Yes.
For Wet Mountain Valley Rotary Community Service, Inc., which is probably legally for the Rotary van?
Yes.
Okay, and then you made a statement in here that this would also help you with your government match, matches for government funding requests.
Yes.
So you wanna use some of this money to leverage to try to get some other grants?
Well, we get funding from the Council of Governments in Canyon City, and our contract with them is, we do 2,000 one-way trips in a year, which is a lot for us, and we've exceeded that goal four years running. We typically do like 2,500, which is a big number, but their other requirement is, any funding we receive, we have to match. So right now, we're at $36,000, and half of our match does come from in-kind, which is the hours the drivers put in, there's money, a name given to that, those hours that they spend in the car. So, to maintain our funding, which is just a wonderful thing with the Council of Governments, they've been amazing partners with us, and we do receive that money because there is no public transit in place in West Cliff, so that's how that all came to be.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you talked about how many trips you do, is like a trip to Pueblo and back, is that two trips?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is tricky thinking, it takes the drivers a minute to remember, they give me checkmarks, and so a lot of times, a trip to Pueblo is a medical trip, a prescription trip, a grocery trip, and dinner.
So how many trips, is that eight?
Sometimes we do six to eight trips for one person in one day, other people wanna get to their appointment and get home, so it just depends on who's driving.
And for the record, your organization was the only organization that we denied through the Conservation Trust Fund this year.
Okay.
Well...
Last two, but that's...
Yeah.
That's why I wasn't gonna... I was going to ask about the budgetary process.
Yeah, so, yeah, when you came to the commissioners, asking for funding from the Conservation Trust Fund, we denied that based on the constraints of the Conservation Trust Fund, which it wasn't an eligible request, and so that is why, for the record, you didn't get any money from the Conservation Trust Fund, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same kind of question, budget wise, because you're asking for money to work for the 2020 budget, and you haven't got the 2020 budget nailed down yet, right, you haven't got your income, because don't you get, don't you come in at the end of the year with donations for other things?
Yeah, and I haven't heard from other funders we have locally either, we usually don't get our funding nailed down till January.
So it's hard to say, and then $2,500, you just sort of wag, probably, maybe just a wild guess.
It's a hope. And my board, we always have a preliminary budget, as I'm sure everyone, that's how everyone operates, and so I kinda put down what I hoped for, and money that I think is coming in, and we've had a pretty good flow of local money.
But you're at 501(c)(3) or whatever.
Yes, we are.
So you're part of the donation process.
We are, yeah.
And so, to me, it would be more easy for us to deal with this if we knew where your shortfall was.
Well, this year, my shortfall was the money that I didn't receive, because we've had this county money since I've taken over the service, with the conservation money, and so we did have a pretty good shortfall, and I did write a grant, and it came through, so we made our match for this year, and we were right at the, we were like right at the... So, and I do, I try to be an active grant writer, it does take a lot of time.
It's good to know, because we occasionally have need for one ourselves.
Well, but it's a very, it's a great process, but it is a difficult one, just being that I am the full-time dispatcher, I do all the books, I do all this, so that's where this local money, to me, is just like, it is the most wonderful.
So when you asked for PILT money, that we figured out that we really could give to...
CTF, not PILT, Conservation Trust.
That's very true, I'm sorry. How much did you ask for?
Well, we had gotten $6,600, two years...
How much did you ask for us during the budgetary process? It was different than this $2,500 one?
Yeah, we asked for more, because we had received more, and I think, when I went back and looked at, you know, I have a file, and I went back and looked, it started out at like 3,000, and then it went up, so...
Let me ask myself, Commissioner, I'm certainly in favor of this, but from which budgetary, I don't know, would this...
Outreach.
My opinion is community outreach, yes. If memory serves me correct, the request this year was the 3,000.
Now, look. Do you know how much we have in our community outreach budget at this point for the rest of this year?
Not exactly, but certainly substantially more than this request.
Further to the end of this... Also, the previous conversation we just had, if we wanted to use some of that money...
3,000 was your request this year. Well, yeah, we ended our conversation about previous agenda items, which I have an opinion about that that would tie into this, but your question was, how much do we have, I can't quote that exactly, but certainly more than this, so... What's your major?
I'll move that we allocate $2,500 from the Community Outreach Fund 2020, sorry, to the Wet Mountain Valley Rotary Community Service.
I'll second the motion, and then I have a question for you real quick. Well, I've been moving second that we allocate $2,500 from Community Outreach, I guess my question is this, I know this is for 2020 request, how would you feel about paying that now out of Community Outreach?
And that's why I asked the question, what do we have in Community Outreach right now? And I'm going back to the prior conversations, because we were digressing slightly, if we decided as commissioners to fund Reach out of Community Outreach, will we have sufficient funds to do both? That's my question.
No, if we do it in 2020.
I understand that, and that's why I was anxious to say, let's get this contract in 2020, not you, the Reach one in 2019, so that we can allocate some in 2019 and the balance in 2020, and if we're able to do that, then I believe we could do both, the balance of Reach, if that's a decision that's made, but we could allocate today the $2,500 for the demand service.
Well, and obviously, the question on the table is, what are we gonna do today? And when would you like to?
I don't have sufficient information to tell you that.
Well, I'm just telling you, there is money in the Community Outreach Fund in 2019 to fund this request, that's what I'm telling you.
Right, so where I am, similar thoughts, she's asking for money in the 2020 budget, and you're willing to reach into the 2020 budget without knowing whether she's really gonna be short $2,500 bucks or not.
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with our decision.
Yeah, it does, because it depends on if you're wanting to fund it now or later. To me, she's hedging a bet, if you're in Las Vegas, because she's trying to cover it, because she doesn't know exactly what money she's gonna have available yet to meet her proposed budget, she knows she's got, and she would like to have $2,500 bucks. If we wait until the end of the year, if you're really wanting to use the 2020 budget, then we oughta wait and find out what she really needs in 2020, because she could come up with $5,000 more dollars and could be able to not even ask for it.
Right.
See, that's the point, so I would, and the other one is, if you're gonna pay it now, then you're not even giving yourself a chance to let her make the money, and to save our money for other things that come up, and we've seen it throughout the year, there's lots of things coming in there all the time, there are outreach viable projects, this is a good one, I'm glad you're doing it, I didn't know you were doing it full time, and that's a neat thing, but, so, you know, we can be responsible about it, and be willing to consider it for the 2020 budget next year, after she gets her budget laid out, if you're short $2,500 bucks, come back and talk to us.
Do you need our commitment for that?
I do.
And I don't agree with almost everything you've just said.
I didn't agree with what you said, I didn't say it like that.
You look at it totally different, you come in here on the merits of this letter requesting $2,500, what you're gonna do with it is really none of our business, other than what you told us.
Well, and I could give you, and if you would like, we're very transparent with where our money goes, with, you know, if you wanted to see anything, I would love to bring in and show you.
But to my way of thinking, you've told us exactly what you should have to make this budget request, whether or not you need it, or didn't need it, or think you're, you can't know that in the future, so I don't need to know that to make a decision, one way or the other, we made the decision, and Conservation Trust Fund didn't qualify, so that's why I take exception or disagree with Commissioner Candace's point, is I feel like you've done what you need to do, I think the only question to us is, do we wanna do this, do we wanna fund this, and then secondly, out of which fiscal year do we wanna fund it? You did not specify.
I did, I did specify.
Oh, you said 2020.
That's why I went into the spiel I'm in.
Because I was thinking, whatever we had left in 2019 possibly would go to Reach. I wanna fund this, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, I drove the van for a while, it's a worthwhile service, it's a community, we don't have Uber, we don't have other transportation, if it wasn't for you taking our elderly down to the hospital and the doctor, what are they gonna do, walk? I mean, really and truly, you guys do a terrific service, I'm not kissing up to you, I'm just telling you, I'm in favor of $2,500 bucks to help them do their job, period. Now, whether we do it from 19, or we do it from 20, that's a fair question to ask, I don't know the answer to that, if you feel tonight, doing it from 2019 is the right time, let's do it from 2019, and we'll worry about Reach later.
I'll be just as emotional about it as you are, Jay, I agree that I like that, no, I'm telling you how I feel too, so let me tell you, and I would be willing to fund that, but I still believe that we have an outreach program, and that if she is short, because she can't match it or whatever in 2020, after all the donations come in and all the budget is set, then that's something that we should consider then, that's my view of it. I don't have enough information right here on this sheet, other than she wants $2,500 bucks for something next year.
Respectfully, we sit here during budget time, and we listen to every single organization tell us how much money they want us to allocate, we don't ask them...
Yes, we do.
No, we do not, we don't ask them, if you don't get this, does your organization not function, do you have enough money? We ask them, what do you need it for, they tell us, and we give it to them.
They came up with a budget, you're right.
This is the same thing they're doing right now, except they're doing it outside our normal budgetary process.
Well, they came in our normal budgetary process, and we denied it, so that's already been done.
And we told them why, and we told them, come back to us with another request, and we'll look at it at that time, we didn't promise anything, that is true.
That's true.
We did tell you, please come back, because at the time, we felt this is, if we had it in the Conservation Trust Fund, this question wouldn't be here, you would have given them the money, and we would never have asked, are you gonna take 10 less trips because we don't give it to you, or whatever the number is, you know what I'm saying?
I'm agreeing with that.
You're using the money for the benefit of this community.
Further discussion, few, public comment, yes sir?
Yeah, quickly, if in fact you guys agree on the allotted amount that she's asking for, and she does come up with what Bill was saying in regards to, maybe she's gonna accumulate that fund sometime between now and the end of 2020, maybe reimbursement, or maybe bring that funds over to the following year, where we would save for the following year, something like that, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, they obviously can have a fund balance, so maybe next year, if that happens, their request is as much, but we don't make a... happens, their request is as much, but we don't make our decisions based on that. We make our decisions based on what's in front of us, because nobody can say, I mean, it wouldn't be fair to say, well, if, and, that's where I'm coming from, we can't what-if you on this deal, you've made a request, and, and there it is. Uh, I, here's my thinking on the fiscal year thing. We didn't do this with any other requests through the budget process, because this is different, it's extraneous to the budget process.
Correct.
If we funded this request out of the twenty-nineteen Community Outreach, it would just help keep twenty-twenty's Community Outreach Fund a little more whole. That is, for whatever we decide we're gonna use that money for. That's only, that's my...
I, I like that too, but, you know, let me say it one more last time here. She asked him for twenty-five hundred bucks, and I'm not sure, I, she told me she's got lots of things to do. What we don't know, whether twenty-five hundred bucks will make her whole either. You know, is it, is that really gonna?
But can I tell you, it will?
Well, I don't know that.
Because I can tell my government funder, I have money from them.
See, that wasn't in the letter.
Well, it said it in our letter in the match.
It says you want twenty-five hundred bucks.
For a match.
I'll call the pollster.
Previous question's been called. All in favor of previous question, which ends debate, and calls for immediate vote, say aye. Aye. Pose nay? We're just voting on ending discussion.
I'm, I'm, I agree, aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was trying to say...
Previous question passes, we'll vote on the question, which is, uh, the motion is to fund the twenty-five hundred dollar request for Wet Mountain Valley Rotary, Rotary Community Service.
It's horrible.
Out of the twenty-twenty budget, Community Outreach.
I would like to request that I amend my motion to twenty-nineteen.
Now you're talking.
I'll second it. The movement is seconded to amend the motion. I'll allow, the chair will allow it, even though we're a little out there now, but, to amend the motion by striking the word twenty-twenty, inserting the word twenty-nineteen. Discussion?
I'm good with that.
Hearing done, proceed to vote, all in favor of amending the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Pose nay? Amendment carries, will now proceed to vote on the main motion, which states that we fund the Wet Mountain Valley Rotary Community Service request of twenty-five hundred dollars from the twenty-nineteen Community Outreach budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for listening to our request.
Nothing's ever simple.
Thank you.
Government works in strange ways, doesn't it?
Thank you so much. Well, and the residents of Custer County, thank you.
Pardon me?
We were driving a lot of just amazing people, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, thanks, ma'am, thanks for being here today. Next item of business on the agenda is the consideration of the sheriff's contract for services with the town of West Cliff. Commissioner Prince, would you like to take the lead, or?
Actually, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is I've, I've had a major hand in writing this contract. I think it'd be appropriate if I refused myself for this decision.
Okay, decision and discussion, or just the decision?
Uh, I think I'd like to just back out of it completely. I don't wanna voice my...
You can't do that.
Positives or negatives? Okay, I don't think it's anything where we need to ask you to leave the room by any means, so, uh, thank you, appreciate that. Uh, so this is an annual, uh, contract that the sheriff enters into with both towns, actually, this just happens to be with the town of West Cliff today, so, I reviewed it, I would move that we approve this contract, um, sorry, I, my, my signature page is first, so I need to square it down, so, uh, the agreement between the town of West Cliff and the Custer County Sheriff's Office. Is there a second?
Second.
The movement is seconded, we approve the contract, discussion, um, I would guess probably we should be asking how much it's for. The annual fee is for thirty-four thousand dollars, and paid in quarterly installments of eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Eighty-five hundred each, and I didn't see this much different than the last one we approved, ain't true?
I didn't compare it to the last one, but I talked to Sheriff Byerly, and it was primarily...
Yeah, I know, but I didn't hear that from the guy that was using it.
Gavel you.
I saw it.
Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing done, will proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the twenty-twenty contract with the town of West Cliff and Sheriff's Office, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?
One abstain.
Motion carries, vote two in affirmative, one in abstention. Okay, very good, we've got that doc, well, no, sorry, we have three copies of that document, so we will sign those. Kind of a weird signature line, but I hope that I'm doing it right. Don't you think that chairman line's a little weird? They don't ask for date either, that's also kinda... Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we will move on. Next item of business, consideration of the fire extinguisher contract. Gentlemen, assuming you've had an opportunity to look at that?
I would like to review the allocation of funds for the fire extinguisher refurb inspections and, you know, for the safety of...
The amount of five hundred and fifty, big ones.
That's it.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
The movement is seconded to approve the contract with Rocky Mountain Fire Extinguisher LLC in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Discussion?
Yeah, this is for twenty-four extinguishers, is that right?
Um...
Is that all twenty-four of them? Or, or just a couple?
Well, it's more than that, there's twenty-four in the courthouse, twenty-one in the sheriff's...
And then there's three at the airport, six at the county.
Yeah.
It's even the one out at the airport. So it's not that expensive, in the big picture.
So, the second question I would have is, do we shop that to see if that's a reasonable price, or is, um, who do we just accept it?
For a small item, though, you don't have to, do you?
Well, I'm just gonna have to, I was just wondering, does someone else do it for a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Hate to trust that fire extinguisher, I don't know.
This is the only company we've dealt with since I've been commissioner. I can't answer that.
Good question, though. Can ask later, huh?
I mean, it's not a huge amount, if somebody else said, we'll do it a hundred dollars cheaper, I'm not even sure it's worth the trouble to put it up.
Yeah, and technically, we don't have to, because it's under the threshold of requests, so... Further discussion? Public comment? Nobody wants to talk about fire extinguishing, don't they?
Rob, come on, you got a comment.
Very done, we'll proceed, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of entering into the contract, annual contract with Rocky Mountain Fire, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Mr. Carey, did we have a hard copy of that?
Uh, the contract?
Yes. If you could print one out, I'll sign it. Thank you. Uh, next item of business is consideration of approval of the ballot, print, and mail services agreement with Run Deck?
Run Beck.
Run Beck, thank you, ma'am. Pull that up real quick.
You want a motion before we discuss?
Technically, that's how we should operate.
I'll move we accept, uh, the, and approve the ballot, print, and mail services agreement for elections as presented by Kelly.
Just a second?
I'll say.
The movement is seconded to enter into an agreement with Run Deck, Election Services Inc. out of Phoenix, discussion.
This came to us kinda late, um, and I'm a little confused as to what it's all about, but could you kinda...
This came to me kinda late.
I, I didn't mean that as a slight.
And it, and, no, I know, and it, and it did come to you late, um, so, the company that we have used since two thousand fourteen to print our ballots and our envelopes, um, started having a bit of financial problems this year, and, uh, the, I believe it was the day that we were supposed to print ballots, um, some legal issues came up that were very scary going right into election, and we got all those lined out, we went with them for this past election, um, but I just decided that I needed to move to a different company, so that I'm guaranteed that everybody's gonna get their ballots in a timely manner. And so, um, Run Beck is who I am going with, and...
They've done the, this up, they've done it for years and years?
You know, they have, not so much with Colorado, um, actually, because of the other company having its problems, the November election was really a big test for them.
Oh, really?
And, um, no, this company, it was a big test for them.
Oh, them.
And they did very well.
Okay.
Um, 'cause they took on a bunch of counties all at once, and, uh, so, yes, they did very well, and I'm kind of under, the reason this came to me, um, late, is with the election and everything, trying to get everything lined out, and, uh, I finally settled on this company on Friday, and they sent me a contract, and, uh, how many envelopes and stuff do you want, the same day, so...
And you're comfortable that this company is gonna be able to deliver?
Yes. Yes.
Is there fees comparable to what the other...
Yes.
Yeah. And if you look on page J, is there fee schedule? Excuse me, I'm glad I don't have to keep up with that. There's a lot of information, yeah, there's a lot of information on that.
What's the timeline that they're supposed to have, what you need to give them before they print? Is there a...
Before they print their stuff?
Yeah, when, when do they go final? Didn't we have a problem with the other company going final?
No, um, they were able, because, uh, Secretary State's office actually got their attorneys involved, and said, the ten remaining counties with you, you will be timely in getting the ballots out, and so they were, um, yeah, and this, this company...
Should have not had the same problem.
Yeah.
So, I found it interesting when I looked at these figures, uh, generally speaking, there, there are other, uh, things that work here, but generally, we pay twenty-five cents per ballot to get them printed, so that's just for the printing. People may say, well, I don't, how much does it cost to have an election? Well, there it is, twenty-five cents a ballot, uh, four cents per... No, I'm sorry, uh, I was thinking about the secrecy sleeve, ten cents a piece to have that little sleeve printed and in the, in the package that you put your ballot in, yeah. Thank goodness, these folks were kind enough to include postage, but I spoke with Kelly...
Which is expensive, too.
Yeah, spoke with, yeah, with four thousand ballots, that's gotta be a pretty good chunk, but, uh, I just thought that was interesting to see some of those numbers, so... Further discussion?
So if you add it all up, how much is that gonna run out of?
I'll just look at it at twenty-five cents per, but if I...
Six thousand dollars.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Good question, I asked the same thing this morning. Any other discussion, public comment?
That ballots can't be sent out via email or anything like that, to save postage?
That's a great question.
Yes.
In Congress right now, they're having that very heated debate of whether or not in the U.S., ballots should be sent out electronically, and there's been a lot of pushback.
Pretty risky, yeah.
They do it, we do it for, um, military and overseas voters, because, so they can give it and get it back to us in a timely manner, but, um, not for...
Like, someone was being in a remote area, a lot of times, we can't get down here to acquire the ballot or whatever, so, you know, that means you're gonna lose out on the, uh, the voting process?
Well, that's why you get your ballot mailed to you, um...
Three months ahead of time.
About three weeks, three, it usually goes out three weeks before the election.
That's a statutory one.
Hope for no snow, Rob.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting that, as a society, we've thought, well, it's okay to email ballots under these circumstances, but we certainly have not, the federal government has not come to any kinda agreement on, is that okay for the average citizen in the U.S.? They, I doubt that will happen for the whole security issue, but we're, we're willing to waive that security issue for certain things and email those ballots, but it's a good question, thank you. Anything else? Hearing done, we'll proceed to, sorry, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the agreement with Sun Deck. Run Beck, oh my gosh, Run Beck, uh, the Election Services, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. By consent, gentlemen, if there's no objections, I'd like to request a five-minute break. It is eleven oh six. Any problems with that? Stand and reset. Resume. I've had a request from our clerk to the board, if you came in late, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, 'cause we try to keep a record of who's here. So I know we've got some folks from the Saddle Club, um, we probably all...
She doesn't know him.
We all probably know the guy in the back with the big scowl on his face. So if you would, please, if you came in late and did not introduce yourself at the beginning of the meeting, we'll start with Ms. Christie.
Ms. Christie Dune, Department of Labor Affairs, Regent.
Charles Vogel, rural Custer County.
Barb Beckner, Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club.
Mary Maury, Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club.
And I think...
Ron.
JR. John Herby.
John.
John Herby.
And Ron Beckner, Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club, board member, vice president.
Vice presidents always wear a tie, that's pretty... I like that.
I was gonna say, when you're in his business, you do, but then you're in that business, and you're not wearing a tie, so I'm not gonna say that. Thank you, appreciate that, folks, thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Get documents pulled back up here. So our next item of business is discussion of the water line to the county, the fire department, and the Saddle Club properties, um, and I put that on there because I wanted to make you gentlemen aware of the situation where we're at, we may at some point have some discussion about this, even though it's not a, uh, an action item today, but...
And the big, yes, sir, go ahead. I was just gonna say, why don't we grab that water line, to, to help some of this discussion?
Yeah, probably not, but that's fine.
Okay, then we can leave it, I've looked at it already.
Yeah, this, this discussion has to do with actually what's not shown on that map.
Yeah, no problem.
So, at Highway sixty-nine, right, going through town west.
Ninety-six.
It stays ninety-six until it gets to the corner?
Yeah.
Okay, so Highway ninety-six and Fifth Street, going to the...
Third Street.
Third, going down to the county shop.
Fourth. That's fourth.
Okay, all right, so at the intersection of ninety-six and fourth, there's a manhole on the north side of the street. That is the beginning of a four-inch water line, that's the tap of a four-inch water line off of Round Mountains Main, and that four-inch tap services Wet Mountain Fire, the county, the fair board, or the fairgrounds, and the Saddle Club. That line is inadequate, it has been failing more and more recently, over the last five years, probably, three to five years. Uh, it, it is in a state of failure right now, up on the Saddle Club's property, but they were able to isolate that with a valve, so the fire department, the county shop is still functioning.
Is the pipe rusting out, what's the fitting?
Pardon me?
Pipe just, what's the fitting?
Uh, well, we don't know, we haven't dug it up, but we assume it's a split, or a blown fitting, or something.
It's a metal pipe, though?
No, it's con, it's PVC, it's a four-inch P G S L forty.
Schedule forty. Holy crap.
Which generally is six...
Thinner than that?
Yeah, is sixty PSI.
It's a sewer line.
Uh, it's sewer line, basically.
It's not a water line.
It was put in pre-eight-six, I know that, it was put in before we moved here.
It was put in nineteen eighty.
Eighty, okay. So I spoke with Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District, he guessed that's generally a sixty PSI pipe, I said, what is your current PSI? He said, mm, it's hard to say, 'cause it varies in the system, but he said, we're probably looking at ninety, eighty to ninety PSI down. But he said, "We're probably looking at 90, 80 to 90 PSI down there off of that 4-inch main." So, um, we, the county, and the Saddle Club have a problem. The Saddle Club takes on responsibility to that line from a point of intersection in the driveway just west of the county shop, county office and shop, the newest building. There's a tee there, from there on, the county has, or the Saddle Club has responsibility to that 4-inch line, and from that intersection back, the county has responsibility for that line. So, um, clearly that line needs to be replaced. I think everybody that's been involved with that on the county side, other than the three of us, 'cause we really haven't been involved up to this point, believes it needs to be replaced. And I think the Saddle Club believes that it needs to be replaced. The fair board is a benefactor, really. I read the lease, they just tagged along.
Well, the lease is with the Saddle Club and the county.
That's right, that's right, that's why I'm saying that the fair board just happens to benefit...
From whatever.
Reap the rewards of what those two entities do, correct. So, um, I put this as discussion, I didn't think it needed to be a, an action item today, but I think we're gonna have to determine, do we wanna replace that 4-inch line from the tap down at least to the point of intersection for the county, that's all responsible for? And then...
According to this lease, we're responsible 50/50 on this deal.
Yes, I...
Signed by John Coleman, you, and me.
Right. I, I read that again this morning. I don't disagree with you.
It was another life that Tom had.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's, that language is adequate, but we signed it.
I bet we did.
I'm not denying that. Um, and I've got it, I think we all have it actually, sir. Let me pull that...
Was that to the new saddle barn, uh, Scott?
What?
Was that to the new barn?
No, there's a tee off of that barn. That line ran basically what we're talking about.
So, so you say 50/50, is it the whole line going to the saddle?
It's from the, from the intersection point where the fire hydrant is, where we fill our overhead.
Okay.
From that point to that 3-inch main coming out of the ground on the south side of the old white sandstand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, they saw you coming.
What? Go ahead, sir, yes, I'm sorry.
For clarification. Round Mountain brings the water up to that fire hydrant?
Uh, well, what fire hydrant?
Do you wanna know what we're talking about?
Okay, the 3-inch standpipe.
Right.
Or to the county, there's, sorry.
Where you want the pipe replaced, we're suggesting that the pipe needs to be replaced. Round Mountain brings it up to a point.
Well...
Explain, I, I'm...
Could Round Mountain take it to the hydrant, or just to the tee in the, in the line out here?
Well, the main line, Round Mountain takes water everywhere there's water.
I understand, but which part of the pipe are we responsible, which part are they responsible for?
Okay.
And my real question ultimately gonna be, does it make any sense to replace a pipe that we're responsible for if Round Mountain's pipe is deficient also?
Okay, all right.
That's where I'm going with my question.
All right, I got you. So Round Mountain has a main, I think it's a 10-inch main, water line running down through that manhole, and we tapped off a 4-inch. Round Mountain has nothing to do with this. Everything from that manhole cover north is not Round Mountain.
That is, that is...
That is county or Saddle Club.
County, Saddle Club, okay. And how, what distances it that would need to be replaced?
In total, uh, I measured from the county, when you say fire hydrant, there is a fire hydrant down by the county gate.
I was just, the gentleman was talking about the fire, I thought maybe, my misconception was that the Round Mountain came up to a fire hydrant.
Okay, all right, okay.
We took off from that point forward, forget the fire hydrant point.
But there is a fire hydrant down there at the bottom of the hill by the entrance into the county shop grounds.
I know that one.
And that's where the standpipe is that they fill there.
I know that.
Okay, so from that point to the 3-inch standpipe up in the Saddle Club grounds is 1,750 feet. I didn't measure from the manhole cover down to that fire hydrant, but I guess it's probably 600, 800 feet.
If the pipe that...
Was it 1380?
If the pipe's... Over a half a mile.
The line look, I got it.
Well, no, half is 20...
2,300 feet.
Okay, hold on, let's one at a time. Go ahead, sir, you had it for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, from the point where round, where we tap in, I say we, the county entities tap into Round Mountain?
Yes.
From that point back, it's about 1,700 feet?
No.
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 From the fire hydrant as well.
So give me just a second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It doesn't matter how far it is. What are we talking about, a cost, and what's it gonna take to do? And are we gonna replace with the same kind of PVC pipe if we choose to do it?
Should we add a grease...
I'm hearing, I'm, I'm hearing this really...
All right, yeah, so, and that's why, it was just discussion, we just need to get it started, so...
Try to understand.
Um... If somebody could, real quick, 371, 475, and 540. It's probably, yeah, you're right, probably closer to 13.
So we, we did get a bid for about 1,400 for the whole place, plus material at $42,000.
The manhole down.
From the manhole, no, that is from the county shop property up to the 3-inch standpipe on the Saddle Club. That does not include the manhole down.
And the manhole down's probably 800 feet, or less than that.
I'm gonna guess, what do you think, Scott, from up there, that manhole down, 600, 700 feet, I don't know. 8 would probably cover it, wouldn't it?
8 to 1,000.
Correct.
I'm just concerned about replacing a piece and then leaving a part that's still deficient without doing the whole, I mean, if you do the whole thing and make it right?
Right idea.
'Cause we're gonna be just in the same position.
That is the crux of the whole...
2,300 feet of pipe.
So, I spoke with Round Mountain, asked them of, "Can you just give me a general idea about the price of a 4-inch water line that you would use in your system?" And he said, "Well, I can't." He said, "First of all, you need to understand, you've got the only 4-inch tap non-Round Mountain water."
Really?
Yeah, and their whole system, we're the only, I say we, sorry. The county and the Saddle Club are the only ones that's got that.
You're part of the Saddle Club.
Yeah, I guess, so, he said, "We would use, if we were doing it, we would use what we refer to as C900 PVC slip jointed pipe, gasketed pipe."
That's what I would use.
At 3, that's what I was thinking. That's what Round Mountain... So, and he said that he believed that pipe could be bought for $3 a foot.
Okay.
Okay, which is pretty minimal based on what has to happen.
That's 6,900 bucks.
So, uh, the problem is, to do it right, we have to cut through the asphalt in 4th Street, dig that up, and replace that water line.
The county could do that.
So, the problem gets into is, and Scott alluded to it, who's on the hook for this? I believe the county, I believe the Saddle Club, and I believe the fire department has to take a chunk of this. I'm sure we could look till we're blue in the face, probably not find a document that would spell that out, but common sense says...
The benefactors of the water line pay for the repair.
So they're not part of the...
And no, no.
They didn't, they didn't live down there at the time.
No, no, they came in later and the good old boy deal, I think just granted them a, I think it's a 1-inch tap going over to the fire department, so... Uh, yes, if you will please keep it brief, and I can explain why, but go ahead, Charles?
Yes.
Since I have some knowledge of Round Mountain, there's also another...
You know you do have, don't you?
There is a, another consideration that I think that the county should consider. Uh, right now, you've got a system that's dead end at Saddle Club. To, to make the system more survivable and such, uh, you might wanna consider taking from the north end around, uh, from the Saddle Club area, uh, and connecting to a line that's along the highway or the road, along the primitive there.
Now, let's talk about that.
Say you wanna bring that up?
Yeah. Glad you brought that up.
Let's get the real distance up.
Glad you...
Which, which would require another tap?
Yes, so, glad you brought that up, I explored that with Round Mountain.
Good thing you're sitting, Charles.
I, I guess I would choose to just say that the price for another 4-inch water tap off of the 10-inch main going up north on Lake Dewey's Road is exorbitant. And I'll leave it at that, if somebody else wants to jump in, that's up to them.
$157,000.
Somebody else must've wanted to jump in.
Let's see, $6,900, $157. Let's vote.
We'll take it out, come out.
Dave Snyder quoted me $154 to $157,000 for a 4-inch tap. So we, and I've actually got the footage, it was 270 feet from a reasonable point on that 10-inch water line on Lake Dewey's Road.
They wouldn't trade our...
Yeah, 270 feet over.
That doesn't make sense.
Please don't use that term as a tap fee, 'cause the tap fee is a standard that would take to tap into that line, the rest of it is the service line, which would be the county's responsibility.
Again, I beg to argue, but that is a tap and meter fee, period.
That's what they said.
Granted, you're right, it, that fee covers them digging down and tapping into that, but that's all, it doesn't have anything to do with the trench, doesn't have anything to do with the pipeline, that's right. Yeah, it's a tap and meter fee. We just call it tap fee, but they do include a meter in that, so... When we got that information, then the county, 'cause we thought about that, that'd be 270 feet versus 1,350 feet, no brainer, until you got to the point of how much is a 4-inch tap. So then I think the Saddle Club backed up, said, "Well, that's not gonna happen, so now let's go back and really talk about the point of intersection from there north, 'cause that's the only responsibility that Saddle Club would have." But then that doesn't do any good to Commissioner Prince's point, if you're gonna replace part of it, you better replace it all, or it'll start blowing out under that asphalt road.
Which will leave us waterless.
Yeah, you're gonna create another weak point in it.
Absolutely. So, I think what we need to do as a county is figure out what that linear footage is, talk to Road and Bridge, see if they have the capability and are willing to dig that line up and replace it, and then repatch that asphalt. And then the Saddle Club needs to do the same thing from the point of intersection, in my opinion, the point of intersection on. If, if it came down to, you know what, cutting, then maybe it's a 50/50 split, I read that this morning.
Well, what you could do is...
We just have to have that conversation, so...
Sure, the, uh, the county can actually do the work and have this...
Could be some in-kind.
An in-kind kinda thing, yes.
Yeah, as I found out, and Bill calculated, that the cost of the pipe is not the issue here, really, that's fairly nominal, yes, sir, you...
That, that was gonna be like, you thought, because to the size of the pipe, now you're gonna be tearing up the, the road and everything, instead of putting a 4-inch pipe down in there. What's the difference between a 4-inch pipe and maybe, let's say, 8 or 10-inch pipe?
Right.
And that'll be the time to do it, save you trouble in your life.
Yeah, kinda had that conversation, I thought you were going in a different direction, but Round Mountain's not interested in even having a 4-inch main, believe me, they would rather see us...
Too bad.
Go down, okay, because they know it puts a strain and stress on their system.
If you're supplying the fire department too, aren't you?
Yes.
So to me, if you want that volume, you do blow up a big amount.
However, the fire department very rarely fills any vehicles out of there.
Right, right.
They, I'm not saying they don't, but it's not their general practice, they don't usually fill their water trucks out of that 1-inch main, so...
Fill a truck.
So to follow up on your point, uh, Mr. Snyder suggested, "Hey, why don't you go down to 2-inch tap and just pull it inside the 4-inch line?" And I believe the county and the Saddle Club would both say, "No, we're not giving that 4-inch line up, because we have a long-term strategic plan in the works of doing some other stuff up at the Saddle Club property." So I don't think anybody is wanting to give up the 4-inch water main. So if you don't wanna give it up, then you have to pay to maintain it, that's basically where we're at. But I wanna make it clear that it's not a standard practice to fill firefighting equipment at the firehouse, it was really designed to service that building.
Kristy, then we'll come to you for a door.
The only person in the room that's got access to any money is sitting right over there. That's why we like her. So, to the point, I think the conversation obviously needs to continue if the Saddle Club wants to investigate a 4-inch gasketed line versus what you were talking about, we just have to see where the money's at, I would guess, and the same with the county. But Round Mountain indicated to me that they're, they would do their business using that C900 pipe, 180 PSI rated.
I think it's imperative we have the fire department involved also. I don't think they're, they're on taxing district, I think they need to pony up for their share of whatever's a reasonable, fair, equitable share of the cost of replacing a, a pipe that is no longer functioning properly.
And I would guess that would look like a linear footage fee, maybe for all of us.
So what do we wanna do, we wanna move ahead here, if you wanna have another workshop, get grouped together, get some costs up?
I'd like to make another comment.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Because of last year's water break, and I know you guys were kind enough to pony up, I think that was about a $9,000 bill that you guys paid Round Mountain Water for us because of that issue of water break. Well, we paid that back, I think, if you guys checked.
That's true, you did.
We talked about that.
We talked about it this morning.
Okay, very good, yeah, so if we kinda, you know, back up the truck, if you will, because of the pro rodeo that's coming, it, of course, the same time as when the fair is having their events, we really can't put another bandit on this thing, so I'm glad you guys are looking at a full...
We're looking at, we're looking at replacing it, we just need to figure out.
We're just hoping that, you know, it gets considered that the money's...
And you guys and the fair guys need to figure out where the water needs to be distributed so that when we do it one time, it's cheaper.
Well, it's all right.
Yeah, we've already got our distribution.
So you're, so you're good with it, with the new, with new water coming into it, everything's all king?
Yeah, and I mean, even for the future.
For the pro rodeo and all that other futures now.
For the future, Commissioner, uh, Canada, we, we can always tap into that 4-inch line and break off, so...
All right.
Well, I think we're good with what we've got laying out.
All right.
Yeah, so I think the, all the entities, well, not all, I think the county and the Saddle Club need to take the lead, come up with some viable alternatives, and then, then I think a workshop would be appropriate to get all three entities, including the fire department, get them together and say, "Okay, this is what we're looking at, this is probably how the county's gonna recommend we split this out."
Yeah, we'll pay 10%, you guys pay the rest.
We're gonna talk about that.
That's our starting.
But, uh, I can tell you, the American Legion, because the Saddle Club does, did not have that kind of money to pay that, the American Legion, who's also leasing part of our building, um, helped us pony up some of that money as well. So, you know, we, we're getting help wherever we can, that's why we're here.
Yeah, and if you came in late, you wouldn't know this unless you happened to be with Saddle Club, but the Saddle Club did, uh, satisfy their obligation to the county, and they paid off the remaining balance of what was owed because of that one water leak of $2,045, and we thank you for cleaning up the books for that, we appreciate that, so...
And did it early.
And did it early, yeah, so, okay, so I think that's where we're at, yes, sir?
Do you have any guesstimate on how long those buildings would be out of water, and could Road and Bridge still operate during that timeframe?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would think probably we would trench side by side and leave that existing water line connected, and then just cut over.
Is that line coming from Main Street under pavement all the way?
Down to the...
Down to our ends.[1708.34] Down to our ends.
Yep. So we'd have to block off Fourth Street.
We'd have to get a concrete saw, or an asphalt saw to cut it.
Yeah. Jay's got one in the back room.
Yeah, Jay's always got an asphalt cutter, no problem. So are we good with that for an approach? Saddle Club members, I just think we need to keep working on a-
And that's what, that's what we're looking at. I wanted the county to basically know that we're looking for some of all this, you know. I know with the weather, what we got going, you know, I don't know if we're past the point of, hey, let's get started on this. Because I can tell you right now, our Saddle Club building is not being able to be utilized for any community events that we've been able to supply in the past.
We're losing money on that.
Yeah, I, you know, we meet again on the fifth and sixth of December. If we could target that as a date to come up with some figures, what we're talking about, I don't think six, eight inches of frozen ground is gonna be a limiting factor there.
Waste water is not an issue.
Certainly, this would be a better time to do it in the winter versus the summer for our seasonal traffic, but-
Yeah, and especially with the events that we've got planned coming up this next season.
Don't you think, Scott? I mean, we're not past the point yet, are we?
Well, yeah, on county rug, Ben's pointed to you, summertime's better, because we're pumping out of the lake, but-
Yeah.
You know, this time of the year, if the snow goes out, we're pumping every day.
And there's not much.
But if we could cut over, I mean, maybe we're down a half a day, I don't know.
Oh, no, we're down two or three days.
I'm saying if we dug a parallel line and then just cut over.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
There's probably gonna be a valve down there somewhere, so could literally do it-
Well, there's gonna be a valve, there's gonna be other utilities.
Right.
You know, there's gonna be a lot, lot to it.
We gotta put meters in. See, that's the other problem we didn't talk about this morning. None of this is metered, except at the junction of the four inch line and Round Mountain's main. That's the only meter there is. So everybody's been kinda-
Who pays what then?
Yeah, that's, it's been a general issue.
That's been the problem. It's just-
Everybody pays.
You pay this, you pay that.
Do you want some history on that? Sure.
When we signed this lease, that day, we shook hands with John Coleman, and the county paid the water bill, the Saddle Club paid the electric bill. And that's how it had been for-
Years and years.
Years and years, and that's how it's been supposedly, supposed to have been operating to this point. The Saddle Club's still paying-
Electric.
The electric, but we got a nine thousand dollar water bill last year.
Yeah.
And they talk about the utilities in that lease, water and electric both.
Mm-hmm.
In section three.
Yeah.
So we probably oughta fix everything, right, Scott? You know, you don't wanna pay for the electric for everybody, and we don't wanna pay for the water for everybody.
Well, if we're gonna meter it, that's-
So we oughta meter it, and then the electric oughta be dilly'd up too.
Well, yeah, but if you're gonna meter it, you're gonna have to put two meters in.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have to put a meter right inside the Saddle Club fence.
Sure. Fairgrounds and-
Then they're gonna have to, the whole, the fair part of it's gonna have to be on line, and then all their frost trees and stuff are gonna have to come off of that line.
Sure.
You know, with a meter on it.
You can meter that on that, and then-
Yeah.
The fair's paying nothing?
Uh, they, they pay the water bill and the electric bill for the month of July.
Okay, and, and that's not addressed in the lease?
Right, no.
There is no, and even in the lease, there is no nominal figure for any amount of money that gets paid by anybody for that ninety inch lease. It's a, it's a free and clear lease.
Yeah. So, yeah, that whole, that's why I said, the fair board side, that's all an internal agreement with the Saddle Club. That has nothing to do with that formal lease between the counties.
The lease is with the county.
Right. Yeah. Um, okay, we'll move on. If you guys will work on that year end, and we'll work on our end, and I'll talk with Gary Hyde, Supervisor Roden Bridge, and-
Okay, are we, do we wanna revisit on the fifth? When would you like us to come back so we can have further discussion, or is there a workshop that you-
Uh, when does Gary come on? Let me check real quick, hold on just a second.
Just so I can have a target date?
I think he comes the second day, but let me just-
We won't be here.
Oh, that's right, you guys will be in Vegas, won't you?
Yeah.
Um-
Maybe do it at the mid-months, too.
Yeah, we could do the mid-month in December.
Okay.
That'd give us a little more time with Thanksgiving.
And I'd like to come back at that time and also talk about maybe some other opportunity that we hope that you guys can supply to the Saddle Club for our-
We're two ties.
Okay. Scott? So that would be December the eighteenth. December eighteenth.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Thank you.
That's a workshop?
Uh, no, that's our next meeting. We'll put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Kara, would you do that? Further discussion, well, just put consideration of, then if we had to vote, we could, it'd be legal, but consideration of water line replacement.
And we're gonna have to make sure we invite the fire department. That's it.
Or don't invite them, we'll just tell them what their share is.
We can do that, too.
Yeah. And then, I'm assuming a workshop with all the entities would be subsequent to the discussion on the eighteenth.
Yes, sir, I'll be there.
So, okay, very good. Um, our next item of discussion, can we take just a quick timeout here? Because I need to clarify something with our administrative assistant. I may have missed something. Is the Saddle Club on the agenda today? Miss Kara?
Yes. Sorry, I'm pulling your-
Because I, I'm looking at the agenda that you passed out this morning, and that's what I was afraid of.
Okay, discussion of water line.
No, that's, we got two agendas floating around.
The one, one I have has a Saddle Club-
I have discussion of water line to county fire Saddle Club properties.
That's what I have.
Oh, yeah.
I have that.
That's right.
That's the public one. I have that.
Okay, but you're here for something different, correct?
Well, no, I'm actually gonna, that's why I was just mentioning it, something different I can-
Okay, if you don't mind, no, we can do it today, if you don't mind, if you look at your agenda, if you can just do it during public comment.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna discuss the lease agreement today on today's agenda.
Well, and that's what I was going to bring up, but it sounds like we've addressed it, as far as I'm concerned, because it was section three that said that you guys are responsible for repairs and-
We've acknowledged we're responsible.
Exactly. And that's what I heard, I heard the acknowledgement.
If you want-
To discuss that-
To dig in a little further.
Further.
Well, it's up to you. I, I have questions about it, but I can go back to the lease.
Need a straight-
But I thought, and maybe we got that too late to get it on the agenda today, but-
Yeah, I didn't deliver it till yesterday.
Okay, then we're good.
It was just where I was.
Okay, so if you wanna hang for a little bit, public comment'd be a great time for me to ask you a couple of questions and look at that lease in a little more detail, but if not, we can deal with it later. So the next item of business on the agenda is consideration of a grant request from Dola, Ms. Kristy Doom.
From you?
No, no, no.
To me. I'm not requesting money.
She's not requesting any.
Well, I'm glad you aren't requesting any, please have a seat. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good. You were here this week already?
Uh, last Thursday.
Last Thursday, okay. Yeah, we were up at Denver at the underfunded courts.
How did that go?
Perfect.
Excellent.
Very well, yeah.
Glad to hear that.
Uh, we were the lowest ask, our county was.
In fact, they were asking us to take more money.
That ranged from thirty thousand dollar requests to-
That doesn't happen.
Two point five million requests, so we were-
Very nice.
We were treated fairly, absolutely. So that was fun. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. How was your drive?
Uh, you know, a little icy and snow packed, but there are places in the canyon that don't get me sun, so I expected it.
Well, for the folks in the audience, if you don't, well, you do know her name, because we just introduced her, but Kristy's been a great friend of Custer County over the years with the Department of Local Affairs, represented us fairly and equitably, and we appreciate that, that's for sure. So we are at a crossroads on our Six Tower project, broadband project. Um, as you well know, I'm saying this for the record, not for your benefit, because you know all this, but the Economic Development Administration at federal level has requested some additional information that we can't give them internally, we're gonna have to go to outside sources to do that, in order to move forward with our million dollar grant request to the EDA. So we met with Economic Development Corporation, Charles, and I think Wilson, you were here at that, both of you guys. And so we had a conversation, we said, "Well, we don't have the money. We would like to ask Dola if there is an opportunity for us to apply for a grant, or if Dola would look for opportunities for grant possibilities to cover the estimated expense of these three studies, correct? There are four, there were four items on there, that's right. To the tune of about ninety seven thousand dollars. Not gonna beat around the bush, we'd like that to be a non-matching grant, and we'd like for that to be a non- attachment to the million dollar grant that's in the wings with Dola right now. We want it all. We don't wanna give up anything. We don't wanna risk anything. You know all that.
I do.
And we'd have to know whether the grant we currently have can be extended in order to make it all happen.
I know.
Yeah, see, that's the other sticky wicket in the deal, because we're coming up, I think that was March, right?
March twenty seventh is the second year anniversary of the award.
Oh, really?
It is.
You knew that?
I did know that. I, I felt like I should be prepared for this meeting, yes.
Yeah, we've already requested one grant extension of a year, and we're granted that, and we appreciate that. When we did that, we didn't realize the Economic Development Administration was gonna keep piling more and more requests on us and our representatives, the Economic Development Corporation locally. So, uh, so let's go in reverse.
Okay.
In your professional opinion, do you think we have any chance of getting another extension?
Um, potentially, depending on what the next conversation is gonna be.
All right. So let's just-
Hold on one second. Are those funds gonna expire at some point? They were broadband funds under the Obama grant.
Not Obama.
I thought that was what it was in regional. So, so they're not gonna expire soon?
So, um, the state had a twenty million dollar broadband initiative, and all of those funds have been allocated, okay? Of which your one million dollars is a part of that. The Polis administration has extended that initiative through our department, where we have set aside an additional five million dollars per year to continue with broadband projects.
But that's beyond the million dollar allocation authority of-
Correct.
It's like six million dollars.
Well-
Yeah, it's, it's twenty million dollars over the next four years for, to use for broadband, middle mile infrastructure.
So I think Mr. Canada was, question was a good one. Are we at risk on the million dollar allocation right now? Or up to March twenty seventh?
So not to beat around the bush, there, at risk is a kind of strong word, however, um, there has to be some good faith movement by the county to show Dola and the state that this is a project that is gonna happen, move forward. Um, with money, additional money being allocated to the initiative, there's always the opportunity to come back in and request funds if, for some reason, the one million dollar award is not extended. Because you have to understand, we have a new administration, we have a new executive director at Dola who's unfamiliar with the project, which I would bring him up to speed on that. We have a new program manager for the Energy and Mineral Impact Program, which these funds have been awarded through. So there have been a lot of changes.
Who is that person?
The new program manager's name is Tim Katers. So I think that there are just, you know, there are a lot of things that we need to, it's too early to say. We'll go with it.
So, the good faith thing, there's nothing like money to indicate good faith, I'm assuming.
It's true.
Um, let's, for conversation's sake, say it's ninety seven thousand dollar-
Okay.
-task of these four requirements from the EDA. Do you think there are funding opportunities out there to help us with that?
Yes, but you have to, you have very, a very small window in which to access those funds. And by small, I mean-
Next week?
Mm-hmm, Monday at midnight.
Wow, okay.
So, yeah.
It's a pretty small window.
It is a small window.
If the window's small, then I'm assuming the documentation is relatively small to go through that window, too.
You know what happens when you assume things, Tom?
Yes, I do. It's not a forty page document, I hope.
You've filled out an impact application before.
Yeah, so it is a mineral impact grant?
It is, so, yes. So we'll, we'll get into the net and bulk of it, because I, I did have conversations prior to getting here, so I knew the best deal that I could lay on the table for you guys, so.
Um, not to beat around this proverbial bush. I forget, mineral impact grants are matching grants?
They are, however, there is a provision in our impact guidelines that allows for a local government to make a state, make a case for financial hardship to have that match reduced.
Okay.
What is the match, um, ten percent, fifty percent?
It's not, so generally, it's fifty fifty. We, um, nine times out of ten, we will do a twenty five percent match. I don't know that we've done less than that, but it could be considered.
Okay, and that would be incumbent upon us after today, if that's the route we choose to go, to write that grant-
Correct.
And have it submitted.
Correct.
And when's the award date on?
So this is the timing question, and this is the good faith discussion.
Probably June.
So it's not June. Uh, it would be mid-February, and you would know of your status of funding. It takes about four weeks to get under contract with us, so knowing that, so-
After February, mid-March.
Right, so we're at mid-March now. We're at mid-March when your letter of award expires with us.
Right.
So you can't do any work prior to getting a contract executed with us, so you can't do work while you're hoping to get money for us.
This is not a reimbursable grant, right?
It is all reimbursement.
Oh, it's all reimbursement, okay.
Yep.
So we'd have to expend the funds, but we can't expend the funds until we get the grant, until we come under contract.
Correct.
Right, not the notice-
Correct.
Coming under contract, okay.
Correct, right.
Which is right at the deadline of our second exten, or our first extension.
Correct.
Which is not gonna provide time to get the work done to satisfy the EDA's requirements.
Correct, which means that the letter could be requested to be extended again, and we could take that under consideration.
And which would get better consideration, six months or twelve months?
Um-
Or does it matter?
I don't know right now.
Okay.
Yep, we would need to, um, have a discussion about how long this, these four pieces would take to be completed, conversation with EDA on how long it takes for them to consider the full application once it's submitted, so all of that would have to be discussed.
Put it in one package, so we're applying for both the extension and the new grant, so that they-
It's not the same, it's not the same documentation. It's not the same, it's not the same documentation.
I know it's not the same, but what I'm saying is, how do you, there ought to be a way of making people aware that, okay, they've applied for a grant.
I am the...
So if you're the awareee?
I'm the wearer. I'm a weird.
The awareee.
Yes.
You're weird, or you're awareess?
So that they can make their case, says, look, we're waiting for this grant to be approved. If it's approved, it'd be silly to approve it and not approve the extension. Because we can't execute. Why would we waste the money?
That is one...
One of the big...
Yeah, I mean, that's one part of the consideration. Another consideration is, you get the work done that you need to get done to get your matching funds in place with EDA and and you come back to us to consider your application.
But it wouldn't come, we wouldn't get the work done in time for the extension to expire before we get there.
You could come in and request the, so, the application, uh, you could make note of the need for an extension. The extension request is a letter, you know...
We went through that once with you.
Yep, yep.
So I guess I would ask for interjection here real quick from the two economic administr, or development company people that's been dealing with EDA. I'm guess, I'm gonna ask you, so far, you think this conversation's going...
I know, oh, I know. Oh, I know.
The timing is gonna happen, but it's not gonna allow that timeframe to have the work done for EDA.
We're not against, we're not on a hard schedule with EDA.
Yeah, with EDA.
Okay.
Uh, EDA does not have fixed points
Okay.
uh, on the grants. It's when everything's completed, it's submitted and reviewed and awarded.
So then the real obstacles would be meeting the March twenty-seventh deadline?
Right.
And then coming up with ninety-seven thousand dollars to hire the companies, consulting companies to do the work for the EDA once done. That's really it, in a nutshell.
And the consulting companies are already out there.
What kind of timeline?
They're ready to go.
Wilson, are they, is it gonna take them four months, a year, two months?
I can't remember, Charles, do you remember what's...
We didn't get a final number, but we were looking, and again, the administrative upfront time of, of getting the, the funding, the ninety-seven thousand, and the process for contracting, which, you know, we, as diligent as we were that there's decision on y'all's part as to whether, what that process is gonna have to be. Those are times that are not identified currently, but...
But then to do the actual engineering work, whatever it seems to take.
But once we get the package, um, and then provide it to EDA, we've got encouragement that, that, like I say, they meet on a demand basis at the state level. And so we might expect that by the time we submit it, it'll be accepted. And we would have a decision from EDA within a month.
Your question, I think, was to complete the study.
Complete the study, so that it meets their requirements.
We're talking at best three to four months.
Less than six. So the other stone we haven't flipped over yet is, could the county ask DOLA to advance us ninety-seven thousand dollars out of the potential million dollars? We've had this discussion once before. And then the second part of that is, if everything goes south, then the county would owe DOLA that money back, correct? Generally speaking. Do you, is it a possibility to request that money, as I'm gonna call it, and advance off of that million dollars? Or is it just another grant request?
I think it's just another grant request. I, um, we have never done that before, um, taken a slice out of an award.
Cause if you took that slice out, would EDA reduce it there?
Yeah, I mean, it affects, this is what we talked about before I went on leave. Um, it would, right, so if you take, well, from Matt, a hundred thousand dollars out, and you have nine hundred thousand dollars from us, then you can only request nine hundred thousand from EDAs, so now the project's down two hundred. So, I think that's...
Where we struggled initially.
Right, right, right.
No problem.
Right.
And then I guess philosophically, DOLA, I'm assuming subscribes to the idea of, wait a minute, if you guys are asking us for a hundred thousand dollars, and we can't get it to you until a certain date, and you decide you can't wait that long, you go ahead and fund this project, then why in the world are you asking DOLA for a hundred thousand anyway? If you've got a hundred thousand dollars, right? I mean, that's why you wouldn't fund something that we had already expended the monies on.
Uh, it is a philosophical question, it's also a state procurement rule. So, philosophy and legal, yeah.
Cause I'd be there, I'd say, well, wait a minute, if you're in emergency, you're gonna pay for it, then why are you going to do it?
If you can fund it yourself, then you should just do that and not wait for our process and our timing.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, plus every time we say we've got the money, you're not gonna give it to us because we got the money.
Right.
So, we've had that problem before.
It sounds to me like mineral impact grant app is next up on the list.
It is, and I looked at, just so you're aware, we have an administrative planning grant process as well that's non-competitive, we accept those letters all the time. I know that there was a draft letter kind of floating around. The issue is that state procurement policy does not let us fund more than twenty-five thousand dollars through that process because it's a, because that's the process. So, you know, if you have seventy-five thousand and wanna come to us for twenty-five, we can have that discussion as well, but I'm assuming it's kinda different.
We had that, we probably would
Exactly, so...
be in another place.
Yeah, so that's why we're on a timeline of applying for a tier-one grant through the Energy and Mineral Impact Program, which is due on Monday.
And those documents are available now?
Yes.
Obviously that is open.
Yes.
You're talking about the second Monday in December, right, not...
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the second of December, yeah.
I was afraid of that.
I know, yeah.
Uh, so, I hesitate to ask, but I'm going to, cause I know you'll answer appropriately. What do you recommend we do?
I would recommend getting an application in, even if you have, I know that Charles and Wilson have, um, enough information about what's needed to fill in the narrative portions of the application. As you know, DOLA doesn't expect perfection in the first round of your application. You just need to get something in, because it closes at midnight on the second. And once it closes, you can't submit anything else.
Once you're in, then you could...
You can withdraw, and we can adjust, and we can do whatever we need to. We can, yeah, we can, we can adjust as we need to. Um, so, you know, our application is not forty pages, it's seven. Um, and it's, you guys have done it before. It's relatively easy fill in the blank information, particularly with what you have here. So if the commissioners want to go that route, that is seemingly the only route to get to our funds at this point.
Kind of an unrelated question, but it'll, I think, tie back to us trying to make a decision. I've always wondered this about DOLA. Is there a time when DOLA goes, gee, merry Christmas, is there any end to the requests from Custer County regardless of what it is, not in brand broadband? It could be totally something unrelated. Does one area affect another area? I don't know, but let's say the saddle club wanted to come to DOLA and ask for help for this water line.
Okay.
Is, does DOLA go, well, jeez, we just did this with the broadband? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Or do you take every request individually and separately?
Um, not, uh, we look at each request on its own merits. However, because I work with you all, not just on water and sewer, not just on broadband, I look at things holistically. So, you know, where are the county's priorities? Are you, um, budgetarily funding what your priorities are? Do you have the capacity to take on more than one grant at a time? So, you know, we look at it in a broad way, and I talk to you generally about it in broader terms. So, um, yeah. And if, so, just, we'll just talk about the water without talking about the water project, right? So, um, that funding would also be a request through Energy and Mineral Impact, also due on December second, unless you wanna wait until April first. Um, you know, how, just thinking about the water project, how defined is it? You have bids, does it need to be designed? Are you looking at, um, the long-term needs of that system? So, is it redundant? It sounds like it dead ends. Does it make sense, if you're coming to us, to connect it to another line? So it is a redundant, um, line and is, you know, has enough pressure to provide for the fire protection district if they have to fund out of that? So I mean, we're gonna talk about that project more than just from the, you know, the main to where you want it to dead end.
So that was a good point, because timing-wise, you heard one, we can't, we would have to submit it now.
Right, yes, you would. So, if you were to submit two grant applications on Monday, the county would need to prioritize, if we're funding one project, what project would it be?
Right.
Because we generally don't fund more than one project in and around coming from an entity. And I will tell you that this, so, it's, it's about helping you figure out what your priorities are.
And that's great, I mean, I appreciate your answer, and it needs to be a reminder to us about fiscally responsible and then what's your whole total outlook? I mean, again, it boils down to what can you handle, what can you fund, what can you actually make happen? Yeah, this, this round mountain thing is a whole nother cat's skin, no doubt about that, but just has a different set of parameters around it. So gentlemen, any comments, discussions, questions?
I have a question, or maybe it's a comment, too. We have three or four days to get this in. Oh, Thanksgiving Day holiday, this grant. How long have we known about it? Have we known about it long enough?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, so this is the first time we're learning this?
Yeah, yeah, we have not had this conversation prior to, about the mineral impact grant.
Then I, then I, just to answer my question.
Uh, another question then to these two gentlemen. So the second, or the next round of grant requests?
April first.
April first, too late.
We've already, we've already spent a month getting to this point, since we came up with what our obligation was.
Right, yeah. And lining up vendors.
Right. Plus it's obviously past the deadline of March twenty-seventh.
Right, exactly.
Gee, we'd have to look at the extension and then...
Yeah, I think if we waited till April to do it, I mean, one of the points Christie made was, what kind of efforts being put forth? You know, if we, if we asked for an extension, well, what have you been doing?
Right.
Well, we haven't been doing anything, we were waiting for April.
Right.
I don't...
Yeah, and...
Plus it would throw us into a cycle that would probably push actual construction conceivably into twenty-twenty one.
Yeah, another year, yeah.
I certainly don't have an issue with submitting a mineral impact grant, if that's what the commissioners wanna do.
Here we gotta match it.
Christie, is it okay that it has turkey stains and...
Yeah, turkey stains, a little gravy, a little wine.
That's fine.
I was hoping one of these two gentlemen would say, you know, I'll skip Thanksgiving dinner and I'll come in and work on the grant. I haven't heard that yet, but it might happen, who knows?
You have all day Monday.
Yeah, that's right.
The point is, some of us are familiar with that format.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got a lot of information that we've provided, both in our tasking and, uh, the, the one thing that, um, is a burden for us, that I'm assuming that you're looking at doing this, is the fact that Dale will not be back in country until the third of December. So, and he's been the lead on this, but, um, the fact that we certainly try, and if the idea being is that the submit on the third, or the second rather, doesn't necessarily have to be perfect, uh, if we have a period where we could, you know, have to review to be done.
We could certainly do it and, and submit it to you, I assume, as chairman, uh, on the second. For your approval.
What would bother me the most, though, we've gotta match it, whether it's twenty-five K or whether it's fifty K.
Why can't you use economic development in-kind support for this and quantify that for...
Cash match, right? Or not?
Yeah, um, the in-kind portion doesn't really help on our side. It's pretty limited on how, what in-kind services we can use as match, um...
Then we'd have to figure out where we're getting the fifty K from.
It, it doesn't have to be fifty thousand.
I was gonna say, is that cut and dried?
How do we know?
Is there some wiggle room or...
There is, there is. In the applicant guidelines, it says, a reduced match will be considered if, um, the case for financial hardship is made.
So we would have to do that in parallel, though, cause we don't have time. Timing-wise, do you have to have the money in hand when you get the application? And we're working the hardship thing, too, so...
So...
And we don't, and that could be as little as twenty-five percent.
Money wouldn't go in with the application.
It doesn't, no, no.
So what did do?
The inherent assumption is...
You, your money is due when you are awarded funds and start working on the contract.
Okay, so we got, we can get into next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're worried about.
There is an opportunity in the grant to say where your match is coming from, and if it's secured. That you need to think about.
Right.
It's as secure as that water line.
Christie, considering the work that we've already done to accomplish the ninety-seven thousand dollars in estimates, which is substantial, why, and are you saying that that in-kind, as well as the, that alone couldn't be counted as in-kind towards it?
Correct.
Been an awful lot of in-kind.
Has been, a lot, an awful lot, there's been an awful lot of work done on this.
And that's probably why they allow that.
But we can't put it in the contract. The contract, do you requesting funds from us is for these four studies?
Right.
Right? So, it's not that there's a line item in the request that shows work that the EDC has done to get to this point, it's not a contract line item. It's a, it's a local effort, it's a, we've done a lot of stuff, it's not something that we...
It's a paid for the cost of the vehicle.
Right.
So unofficially, gentlemen, what's you thinking here? Or officially, the chair would entertain a motion.
We have to use next year's budget?
I just don't think we have a lot of alternatives at this point other than to submit a mineral impact grant.
And, and whatever the offer is in terms of reduced matching funds, at that point, you decide whether that's acceptable to you or not.
Right, do that, we have to be...
Along with the source of funds.
Right, we're not committing those funds, we're saying we have a secure funds if that's what we decide to do once we have submitted the application.
And you, as the county, can determine what you feel is an appropriate matching amount, and you put that in the budget, and then we discuss it.
Okay.
Go ahead and move that we approve, um, submitting a grant for DOLA for the ninety-seven thousand dollars, um, to allow us to, um, obtain the studies for the EDA grant.
I'll second the motion. The move is seconded to approve, uh, submitting a mineral impact grant to DOLA for ninety-seven thousand dollars. Yes, sir?
I will discuss. What was the exact amount?
We need to make sure.
Ninety-six, seven, five, three.
Yeah.
Ninety-six, seven, five, three.
Then I'd like the motion to...
Friendly amendments accepted, yeah.
Does it have to be exact? Does that mean it's exact?
I'd like it to be exact.
That is the number, yes.
Right, they'll do it for that.
You good with that?
Yes.
Uh, further discussion? Go ahead, sir.
My stomach is flipping here over a couple of things. One is, you made a comment, and I've known this all along, if we get this and for some reason this project is a failure, where are we gonna get the money to give it back to you? That's my first concern. Second concern, I'm just thinking money-wise.
Sure.
Even if we have to go up to twenty-five percent of a hundred thousand, we have not budgeted twenty-five grand to help fund, you know, our matching grant on this. I'm concerned financially about both aspects of that. That's just my concern.
And could you just restate the first concern again, I'm sorry?
The first concern is that if we receive a grant for ninety-seven thousand dollars
Right.
and the project, for whatever reason, fails to materialize, we would then be on the...
Like, what if EDA didn't approve? Would EDA...
That's... No, can I, let's step back, okay, so...
Probably, cause I'm confused now.
Okay, so, if you're requesting funds, ninety-seven thousand dollars to complete these studies,
Right.
then that's your obligation. Taking money out of a million dollar grant that you were awarded to do towers is different.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, so, no, no, that's, no, that's totally fine. So if you're awarded these funds through a separate application, you have the information that you need, right? This is, that's as far as our project goes with you at that point. You complete those, and you're done.
Plus studies.
And you're done, right? Obviously, we've all put a lot of work into, uh, potentially moving the project as a whole forward, and there's an understanding that there's a commitment that the county wants to do this, but it's very different than asking us to take from the million dollars that was awarded to do this. Yeah, so you're okay.
Crystal, crystal clear, then. EDA does not award us the contract, the money, and we can't execute it?
Then the million dollars goes away.
It goes away, and so does the hundred thousand dollars without us owning it.
Yeah, there's no, there, the, the studies contract is the studies contract.
DOLA accepts an inherent risk that if everything goes south?
Yes.
You're gonna lose that ninety-seven thousand dollars, we're not gonna be paying.
If that's what you're awarded, yes.
Less the amount that we map.
No, you'll have four studies.
You'll have four studies that you could use, you could use for, exactly.
Yeah, and that's what we need to keep in mind, it's just for the four studies.
And we'll be out, but we, the county, will be out. The matching fund that they have, you're taking a, if it's a twenty-five, seventy-five, you're out seventy-five grand, we're out twenty-five grand.
But you have the information.
Right.
And that's an acceptable risk, I don't have an issue with that.
But we got what we paid for.
No, 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 there was no...
I misunderstood.
Mr. Bowden, yes?
We, we put all our, all our, uh, any success or failure on EDA. I would suggest, I've been asked before, what happens if EDA doesn't approve it? And I think the answer is, we go to USDA. It doesn't kill the program necessarily, you just...
Well, I guess it would depend on, do we get an extension or not?
True.
If we don't, then it would, because that other million goes off the table. Doesn't mean we couldn't come back and re, and start the whole process all over, right, with DOLA?
It's a conversation to, it's, yeah, well, just to deal with that, yeah.
If you keep saying that, Wilson, I'm gonna come over there. You're exactly right, sir, we would have four studies done.
That could be used for an FDA grant.
Yeah, that, it doesn't mean everything goes away. It just means the processes we know it might take a different direction.
And certainly more time, and it would be dependent upon an extension.
I mean, don't forget, I had a head full of pair when we started.
That's right. I kind of, no, I don't remember that, actually. Further discussion?
Yes, I did. So, so the 25K or the 50K's gotta come out of somewhere next year.
Well, the matching grant amount.
That's what I'm saying. We have to come out of somewhere, and we gotta be willing to go dig and tell somebody we not gonna do this.
It doesn't have to be 25 or 50. It's an amount, right? Whatever we indicate to DOLA that we think we can handle. But your point is the matching grant.
Maybe we say 5,000, but it'd have to be reasonable, you know? But you're right, we have to figure out where it comes from for next year, and we're, we're looking into the crystal ball here again, and we're gonna not do something next year because we've got a tight budget as it is. Right?
Point taken, yes. Another point of clarification, if the county indicated to DOLA, we do not have any matching money. Everything, that mineral impact grant would probably.
How you, I mean.
We would have to show you.
You would have to show, yeah, that you really don't have any matching funds, and I didn't look at your budget prior to coming to the meeting. So if that's the argument that you want to make, then that's what you put in the application and we discuss.
Okay, gotcha. All right, further discussion, further public comment?
On that last point, Christie, is that negotiable? In other words, if the county came and said, we have no money, no matching funds at all, do you counter that? Or do you just take that and say, okay, sorry, you don't get it?
No, we, no, we would talk about it.
Okay, so it's.
You're not saying that.
No, that's fine. We'd talk about it. We, we don't fund projects that, we would talk about it. It's fine.
And along that line, and, and, and we, the county, can back out of the deal before actual money transfers if there was some reason we couldn't find the money.
I think that's what we suggested.
That's what we were saying before.
We wouldn't sign the contract.
Right, we wouldn't go under contract.
So we wouldn't be out of it, so we could see how everything plays out.
I'm gonna be that person that reminds you that at least two of you have said in the past.
No more.
No more county funds will go to this project.
Correct.
Right.
Whether, if you're gonna walk that back, you're gonna do it publicly.
Absolutely. Have to. There's no way to do it privately.
Well, that's why I just made it public.
That's why I'm asking right now.
Those statements were made on the record in November of 2017.
And that was the point I was just trying to make. If we don't get the money, we can't, I'm, I'm not gonna vote to do it either. You know, as long as we can, if we can back out of it at some point and not spend the money, I mean, we may not get this grant. I mean, so I'm, I'm willing to try to get the grant.
Well, and I will just say that the county has to decide if this is a project you want to do.
Right.
If this is a project that, for the county.
Correct.
Whether, if, if you're asking someone else to take on full responsibility for something, we have to ask, is that appropriate?
Right.
Sure.
Good point. Yeah, I'll take it.
Yeah. No, that's right. We, and we said it at a subsequent meeting to what Jackie's talking about. If we're gonna do this as county commissioners, then we're gonna go all in and do it. And, and if we're gonna apply for a grant, and we're gonna suggest the matching amount, and DOLA agrees, then, for me philosophically, why would you even ask that if you weren't gonna put the money up? You know, we say, oh, we'll put up 25 grand, and they say, okay, you do it. And then, no, we were teasing, we're not gonna do it. That's not right, and it's not fair to the process.
That's why it's gonna be hard for us, Tom, if we, because right now, I don't see the, where the money's coming from. And that's hard.
Yes, sir.
Seems like you have some logistics issues as well. You have till Monday at Bednix. So somebody has to write that grant and get it to you to approve.
Correct.
That's the point. And it, can we email it?
Yes.
It's a portal system. It's, it's online.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of submitting an application to DOLA for, through the Mineral Impact Program for $96,753, say aye. Aye. Oppose, oppose nay. Motion carries. Three in affirmative, zero in the negative.
Logistically, who, how, when, and where? Well, I have no family here for Thanksgiving. If you need a commissioner involved.
Okay.
I think Charles and Wilson just said they've got the, and it doesn't have to be perfect.
Right. So whoever it is, just to help a little bit, whoever it is. So on our website, Cara, you'll want to notice too, on our website, there's a link that says, "Application." It's a Word document that is, what, what's in the portal, you can fill it in, and then it has to be transferred, just copied and pasted into the portal, but it'll save a lot of time, so it can be worked on, and you're not typing in the portal. But that might be the easiest way, because if Wilson and Charles have the bulk of the information, and they could download the application and just fill it in to the best of what you have, then, yeah, that's.
If the form hadn't been changed, I guess the real question is, the county commissioners, are you all gonna ask Economic Development to, to prepare this grant request for submittal?
Well, I think that's where we're headed here. That's what we're trying to decide right now.
You're the only ones with the information.
Well, I mean, we have it, because you've provided it to us through the last document you gave us, but.
But we did with the process and with the.
That's not in the format for the.
Right, yeah.
That, that's in the format for satisfying the EDA requirements.
Right, yeah. I'm just saying, you have the information, you've given that to us. I'm not saying it's in the correct format. So I know we're gonna rabbit trail a little bit here, but I have committed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to construct the security wall in the DHS office. So it would be a little unrealistic for me to say, I would be glad to do the lion's share of that work, because I'm gonna be next door building that wall. With heaven's help.
I'm not trying to put this work off on anybody, but these gentlemen are the ones with the knowledge. I mean, if you want me to sit there and watch you do it, I'll be happy to join you. I mean, I really will.
I, I would suggest, in the best of all worlds, we need a signature by the representative of the, of the VOCC.
Right.
And take us that we know what we're doing as far as the grant submittal preparation goes.
Well, I certainly have no problem asking formally the Economic Development Corp. To do the lion's share of this work on this mineral impact grant, if, if you're willing to do that. I do not have the time. I mean, I got this afternoon, which I'm supposed to be in there dismantling a bunch of stuff in that room to get ready to put this wall up, but let me rephrase that. I could make the time, but it would be very stressful in my world. If Commissioner Prince is willing to collaborate, I'm gonna say you two gentlemen, because you're sitting here, I think that would be good. We're getting ready to vote on whether or not to submit this application. We didn't, excuse me, sir. We didn't specifically say that the chairman of the VOCC was gonna sign this, but I think that's an inherent assumption.
I think that's a requirement.
That's a requirement, I believe.
Or we did vote, sorry.
It, it doesn't need, it does not need to be signed, no. You've made, you've made a motion here today to accept it, to submit it, so that today's date will go in the application.
I think we did that.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, we did.
You guys, why don't you go do it?
So, do you?
So these guys can't send it in. They can't put it in the portal, but Cara has, Cara has credentials to get in the portal to do the actual submittal for the county.
And that could happen during the day on Monday.
Correct.
Perfect.
Are you gonna be around?
Or even early evening?
Let's do Monday.
So we will work on it. We'll get it to the two of you. Perfect.
Cara, just confirm.
The two of who?
Midnight, it might be five on Monday, if you just look at the thing. So, I don't know. I don't have any idea.
Because I jokingly said, or.
It used to be midnight, but it used to not be in the portal, where stuff is shut down automatically, so, yeah.
Well, the second is, we don't need to sign it.
So back up, who are you submitting what to?
Well, technically, Cara can submit it, because she has the authority to get into that portal.
Correct.
We have just formally voted to submit it.
Correct.
It doesn't need a signature.
Correct.
The CCI conference is in Colorado Springs Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Correct.
But that shouldn't be a deal breaker.
There's nothing else for you to do if you have agreed to submit the application.
So what we need to do is get agreement with CCEDC.
Okay.
To do that, so, so that.
Editorial comment. It would've been a whole lot nicer if we had known this three weeks ago.
Well.
Okay, so, so now, we're, we're where we are now. What about the, now we're gonna have to figure out what the matching funds piece of this is. How do we get into the, to the process of that? Because you're gonna get the applications, then how much time we have? Does it have to be done before you, this is the middle of the application's complete, right?
You need to put something in the application.
Okay.
Right.
In the budget.
So what do you want?
Yeah, and that's a conversation we'll have to have. Is there any other thing specific to that? The last time I looked at a mineral impact grant was when we submitted one to you, and I reviewed it. I didn't write it.
Right.
If we make a decision today about what we feel we can handle for a matching grant, is there anything else that we would need to decide formally about what goes in that grant?
Not by.
If you can think of. I don't want to beleaguer this in front of you if you need to go. You're welcome to stay.
It's up to you if you might have more questions for me. I'm happy to stay. Bye.
Okay.
But I, I can leave if you wanna.
No, 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 I'm not.
We're not talking about you.
We've taken action.
Because I apparently can watch it on the video.
We've taken action on why you were here, so that really is done. Now, the only other decision, I guess, is what we feel like we can handle.
For matching.
For the matching, yeah. Conversation, gentlemen, about that, or?
And just, you can put nothing in the application to start with, so that you can review your budget and have, like, an actual, real conversation about it. You can put, just, the request is for $97,000 or whatever that is, and then in December, while I'm reviewing applications, I come back and talk to you about it. So we can do that. I mean, that's, that seems.
I'm not in any position.
Exactly. So we're gonna have the conversation later anyhow, so if that helps you.
It's not a black mark against us if we don't put something in there at this point.
At this point.
Based on our conversation.
Correct. Correct.
If this all hadn't happened, and you got that grant application, the zero match, that probably be a different ballgame.
And I was hoping we could do this a different way, which is why we're such a.
It's why you're here.
Short timeframe for it, but if you can, seriously, it just needs to have how much you're requesting, get the right information for the, you know, responsible administrator and chief elected official. Don't, you don't have to kill yourself if the county's decided to do this. You don't have to spend a large amount of time to put it in there. That's basic information in the application at this time. Exactly, exactly.
And so, I'm just gonna suggest that if we could get together before noon on, I say we, I'm not gonna be here, but if you guys, I just don't want this to happen to Cara, that she gets this at 3 o'clock Monday afternoon, and then has to re-figure out how to get to this portal and get that submitted. You understand what I'm saying?
We just gave Cara the.
We're not gonna.
11:30 PM.
Sorry, Cara. Sure done. She ain't gonna.
I understand that three of us are gonna be on a tab on Monday.
Right, we're going to a conference in Colorado Springs on Monday.
Okay.
We will be available through email or whatever, but we're not physically gonna be in the county. Comfortable with that?
No, but we might get it.
Got you good.
We've come to for a grant.
Yeah.
Can I, can you come back here before you leave? Okay, thanks.
So I think that'd be the route, then we just submit the grant. I mean, well, there are other grant, uh, routes.
Then we're gonna have to talk about.
We could make a motion today about matching grant amounts. I'm not.
Right, we got.
I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying we could do that.
And, and I'm serious. We, we got, we have a budget, and we said, we're not gonna spend any more money unless we can figure out a better way of doing it, so we're gonna have to look at how we're gonna pull that.
Well, you know, I heard that a little while ago, but times change.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Philosophies change. Let me finish. Philosophies change, and if we want to change our mind, that's what we need to do. We need to do it right for this county.
No real problem with that.
Yeah.
That's why we've gotta look at what we got.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't suggest any kind of motion at this point, because we don't know what the final amount would be.
Of course, that's right.
The final amount is.
But the decision that we've set here made is, we're gonna put a big zero in matching funds. And then wait and see.
Wonderful news. We could just get it in and work the details out. Once we get, once we meet the deadline, and we'll work the details out. We're committed. We've been committed all the way through on this. No one has voted to kill the project. We were surprised that EDA came up with more requirements, an extra hundred grand, and we said, well, do you want to take 200, technically 200,000 from the project, assuming you were willing to do that? And we said, that's not gonna fly. You told us that. So we said, okay, it's good plan B. Plan B is, let's raise the $97,000. How are we gonna do that? We're asking our best partner to help us, and they said, we will. To what extent? We're gonna find out, okay? And then we're gonna step up. We are not destitute. We are not begging on the street to get money. We will help fund this project, in my opinion, and the other two may feel differently. That's how I feel.
Well, yeah, I think we're fooling ourselves and everybody else if we're trying to think we're gonna get through this with not expending money. There's no reason to even have this conversation. It would be ludicrous to.
Well, unless, unless we can prove that we don't have the money, which we, and we're saying we don't, then it's a different ballgame. But that's why we have to look at the budget.
We haven't finalized it yet. That happens on the 5th.
Right.
And then Christie will have a copy of that?
But it gets submitted to us.
Yeah.
By the end of January, I think, is when we.
Yeah, so, you know, to Jackie's point, I, I said that. That doesn't mean I can't unsay that, which I am capable and most likely will unsay that, because we're gonna have to spend money if this project's gonna go forward. That's my perspective. I could be wrong, but I think it'd be very irresponsible to think that we're gonna get six towers in this county without the county spending a dime, so, uh, got no problem in revisiting that. But, yes, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Love these conversations with you.
Well, you're the one that wasn't at DOLA. So many things in this county would not get done.
Thank you. Yeah, uh. And I don't know if it ever comes a time when the citizenry of the state needs to lobby to get DOLA more money or not. I don't know how that, that go, way above my pay grade, but we had this conversation at underfunded courts. They're funded at $3 million, and I said, has anybody stuck a finger in anybody's eye and tried to get that to 4 million? Because there's a definite need, but.
How do you lobby? Your, your bets how you raise your money?
Uh, these funds come from severance taxes and federal mineral lease taxes.
No target.
It's, yeah, we just make sure that it doesn't get taken away.
Yeah.
That's, that's what CCI.
Keep it in place, yeah.
And CML does, to ensure that the funds stay as discretionary grants to local governments.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. We appreciate that.
I'm gonna go back and talk to Cara.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we didn't have another meeting, I'd volunteer to take you to lunch, but unfortunately, I don't think that's gonna happen, so. Uh, thank you, really appreciate it. Okay, uh, public comment. Yes, sir. You can come forward if you'd like. If you guys have not met, this is Ron Bettner.
Good to see you.
Uh, how are you, sir?
Good, good to see you.
I can tell you that, uh, Mr. Ron has a business just down the street. Take care, Ron.
Take care, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good day.
What's your address?
595 Hermit Lane, right on the corner.
Right across the street from Shell Station, which is.
Twice as often?
Yeah, just south of the Bassett Church.
Totally renovated. We just, I just had the rollaway pulled out yesterday.
Oh, wow.
The hot tub in yet?
Um, not yet, but I'm piped and ready.
All right, so let me just real quick try to pull up this lease again. So it was an email from 11:26, Cara sent out, that had the Saddle Club lease agreement on it. So I'm assuming that's the general conversation we want to have.
It is.
You said section three.
Yep.
So.
Section three.
At the very top of the page.
Understand, these are hereby grants.
There you go.
Yeah, so the right and privilege of using all water mains and other facilities for the distribution. Yeah, so the right and privilege of using all water mains and other facilities for the distribution of domestic water, with all the expenses of the extension of the water mains to be assumed by the leasee.
Yep.
Which is the county, by the way.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, also understood and agreed that the leaseor grants to the leasee the right and privilege of using all the electrical lines and other electrical facilities, with the all expense of extension of electrical service repairs and maintenance to be assumed by the leasee. So, to Scott's point, I don't, I didn't remember seeing split this fifty-fifty. I'm not saying it isn't in there, I just don't remember reading that.
It's just in a separate section where there, where there talks about equal and equitable, if you will.
Right.
Now, you know, obviously, we as the leaseor, and if, if you know our finances, we are in, you know, we were in no condition last year to pay the nine thousand dollars outright, and that's why you guys stepped up the plate, which we appreciated, and again, we had to have help pay that. But, uh, you know, once the board reviewed this lease and started reading the language in depth, that's one of the reasons it prompted this meeting for me to sit with you guys and say, hey, we need a resolve.
Right. Yeah, uh, the last sentence in there says that, oh, okay, that's fine. Did you look in your email? Kara emailed it.
And I have a copy here if you would like, I do have an extra, there's two there, actually.
So in section three, uh, so it says that, uh, but in the event that in the future such person supplying said utilities shall make additional charges thereof, the leasee shall bear its reasonable equal expense.
And, and we could split hairs on that if you want, but I, I'm gonna agree with you that the county as the leasee, I read it, but I am not an attorney, I'm not-
Right.
I'm just a person looking at this that happens to be a board member and a vice president of his club, but I understood it that the leasee does have the responsibility for the repair and maintenance.
Okay, so let me reread that.
Of the water lines.
And Scott, I would ask your ear on this as well, it, in quotes, it's part of the context, but in the event that in the future such person supplying said utilities, well, that has to be- Is that Sangre or Black Hills?
That's Black.
Black Hills, so that has to be Black Hills or Round Mountain Water, right? Those are the only two.
Yep.
So, in, in the future, such person supplying the utilities shall make additional charges. So in other words, we get charged more by those two entities, then the leasee shall bear its reasonable equal expense thereof. Got no problem with that personally.
Right.
Because that's out of our control. If they raise the water rates, which they're going to, by the way, I didn't bring that up, but I had that conversation. The Saddle Club is out of district, and they're going to- Start charging us out of district rates. I'm convinced of that. That would apply here, right? But, the water line going to pieces is not what they're talking about in this lease.
And, and I concur.
Yeah.
I will concur with that comment.
Does Shadow Ridge out of district?
No, they were annexed in.
But we give Round Mountain the right of way, give, to run all that up, that doesn't run through like the lease-
No, it doesn't.
Which I actually do have that agreement with me too, if you guys would want to see that agreement.
Yeah, they're very aware of that, Scott, because-
Good point.
I've been pounding away on them, in fact. Uh, you can bring your chair up here if you want, that's fine. So, yeah, and you and I, of course, were heavily involved in that.
Yes.
And, and nothing was written, that's the problem.
And, and Cypress did all that work, right? Didn't charge them a dime.
Right.
Just to get that sewer and water to-
Up to that sewer.
And I talked to Jerry again the other day, and Jerry said, why, why didn't we have our head together and just put a tap in that line and run it out there and stub it off?
Right, should've done.
And verbally in those days, we were more concerned with sewer, because we had a need.
Let's copy that easement.
We didn't have a need for water, and so they granted us-
Have Kara make a copy of that.
Well, physically, we've gotten one sewer tap. I was understanding that there were two sewer taps.
Should've been one for the bathrooms your FFA kids built, and then there should've been one for the building, you know, for future use.
And, there is nothing in writing that anybody can uncover about that. So we know we have a sewer. So we still have a sewer tap, we know that. Yeah, so we gave them the easement across the Saddle Club in exchange for a water tap, or sewer tap.
Sewer tap.
Yes.
That's what's happened. We thought there was other things, but... So, um, again, as you indicated, it's kind of a follow-up conversation.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt just a second?
You may.
Thank the three of you for your cooperation and support.
Thank you for being willing to press on with the mineral impact, thank you.
You need me to be involved, or you're just gonna take care of it?
We'll need, we'll let you know as we need you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm assuming, is this, who's this between?
This is between Saddle Club and Round-
And Round Mountain Water. So, yeah, you can have Kara make a copy of that, and-
Doesn't have anything to do with the county.
Shows who's the easement is.
Exactly, and I've asked for this document, never could get it.
And the fact that the easement runs through our property matters, and so-
That's exactly right.
For future-
I've actually got copies of the original deed as well as, um-
This doesn't run through our property.
No, it does.
Runs through Saddle Club, right?
It's down there, but then it, but before that, I thought, where's it go to Saddle Ridge or the-
Are we talking the water line, are we talking the easement?
No, we're talking water line.
Yeah.
That's what this is about, right?
Yeah, it runs through the county shop.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, this is the easement. This document's the easement, that doesn't run through county, you know?
Right.
Um... Yeah, they bored under the highway outside of the county project, or the county, I mean, obviously, they went under the highway, but then they came right onto the Saddle Club property.
Yeah, right there in the corner, there was a big hole there.
Right.
The whole county fair and revenue.
So, um, hopefully, we can get the two primary entities, Saddle Club and the county, to say, let's replace the whole stinking water line. Think that's what needs to happen?
Absolutely, in fact, that's-
I don't know how we finance that?
Yeah.
I don't know how we fund that for sure, but we won't know until we get some numbers put together.
Right. We do have some other bids that are, uh, coming in besides that forty-two thousand dollar bid that we received, Kara. We're just waiting to hear from some of the other contractors. I know that, you know, between Scott and I, we've had some other discussions. I mean, I was a pipe fitter for twenty-five years prior to this, so even getting into the, you know, Holly, HDPE, which is a high-density polyethylene piping, that's what they actually put in the underground for the Black Hills Power Plant, which I was part of, so I'm certified in that, or I was, I have knowledge of it, and I know Scott does too. But, um, you know, that's two hundred PSI plus eight hundred PSI burst rate. I, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. But the C nine hundred pipe that Round Mountain Water, um, I'm sure would be appropriate as well. I think we're, we just gotta figure out cost and how we're gonna get this done.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to trench, so that's a fixed cost. That's not gonna vary much, right? We can get two or three bids, actually, in this case.
Or we can have the county.
The county, or the county maybe could do that, I don't know, but we're probably talking a track hoe. I don't think-
Well, it's a lot easier to dig that hill to track hoe.
Yeah.
I mean, we can dig it with that new hoe, it'll dig it no problem at all, so.
That's a Gary conversation.
That's a Gary conversation, yeah.
Um... You have not gotten an excavation bid yet.
Well, I have, I have spoken to Kent over here at Seaford, um- Yeah, Seaford, he has given us just a bid for the piping, not so much for the trenching, and that was still at thirty thousand dollars.
Forty-two thousand include the excavation?
That is correct, that is correct, so.
But from a different company?
That is correct.
And that was the, all the pipe we're talking about, or just from the-
It's the pipe, the fittings, the excavation.
Just from the-
But-
Just from the tie-in point, that doesn't include the county up to the tie-in to the main, that is correct.
I certainly don't have a problem talking to Gary and saying, is there any chance the county could do the excavation?
Especially if we're gonna do parallel, they can take, it's not a matter of time.
Right.
The other thing is, I personally, from my experience, would just soon not dig up the old water line.
Oh, I agree, I, I think you need to shadow it.
Yeah.
So then when you do your tie-in, well, you're gonna have several tie-ins.
Yeah.
Do what you're talking, you're gonna have one, two, three, probably eight to ten tie-ins up through there to the end line.
Well, yeah, but all the tie-ins on, on the Saddle Club property could be subsequent to keeping the fire department and the county.
Yeah, we gotta keep those two.
We could always dig in and tie into those.
Tie it in.
But, in, in reality, Mikey, yeah, but the, the reality though, I mean, to, to shadow, to parallel that line, we're gonna be crossing-
Other utilities.
Other water lines, for sure, because we know where they're at.
Well, we know that there's a, uh, electrical utility along that, that cross, um, in the leased part. By you guys, so.
Uh, there is a map, as best as I can determine of where the water lines are right now.
Okay.
No electrical. But the other thing is, I just met with the CU Denver Architecture Bunch. They're looking at some possibilities, so when we choose the route of this new water line on the Saddle Club property, we gotta get around their footprint of where they wanna put a building. Not a big deal, but we can't just shadow, I don't think we can, it wouldn't be wise to just shadow the existing water line all the way through. Go ahead and tear it off there if you would, please. Just stapled on, so...
So, where they, what's the CDG?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna show you. Not that anything's been decided, but this is their suggestion that this water line come that way, because they're, they're suggesting maybe a building right in here. So they were hoping we wouldn't put a new water line right there that we might come around that.
So, what you're telling me, because we were of the understanding that this line literally dropped down, crossed the road, and came straight down, so it does not.
Comes up that hill.
Follows the road line.
Well, this road was not there.
Yeah.
Well, this, I, I guess I'm talking about the parking lot road for the, the county fair, because here's where you usually park.
Yeah, how, how did you figure out it came there?
We witched all of that.
Okay, and Jerry Lyman could put it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I didn't know that. So there's a tree sitting right over here by that entrance coming up that ramp. That water line goes right under it, yeah.
You know, we got lots of trees tearing out.
Yeah, and the deer have almost torn it out.
Yeah.
But that's an, that's just a mark for you if you wanna go out there and look. There's one tree, when you come up this, it's just off the picture, it's like right there.
It needs, so that may add footage to it.
Yes, probably would.
It may add another five, six hundred feet to it.
And fitting.
And fittings.
Yeah.
Hmm, no, wouldn't be any fittings.
That's a ninety there, isn't it?
Well, sorry, I thought you meant to tie off to somebody else, no, 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 yeah, yeah.
And then, if we meter it here, where it comes in the property back here, and then, like Jay was talking, if you bring it up here, and then the county puts in their own line for their own fair barns, and we put another meter right there, uh...
Well, yeah, that's a conversation we're gonna have to have.
Right.
So what is this?
Three thousand bucks a piece.
That's a water line, is that for Cross Rees Bill?
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It's on the east side, okay.
Is it, we're spending three thousand dollars for the fairgrounds to use that water for a week, or ten days? That's what, that's what a meter's gonna run us.
Okay, but, well, let's-
That's a conversation-
Abs- absolutely, but I mean, the county's got a ninety-nine year lease, you know? So it's not like it's wasted money.
If you put a building in somewhere over here, then is that gonna be a winter thing where you use more water?
Is that a pole barn, what kind of building are we talking about?
Yeah, you know?
Probably a metal building.
Yeah.
Most by use, so yeah.
But you wanna put it in, wait.
Is it gonna have utilities, water?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, so there'll be another, a water line going in there from somewhere?
Probably be bathrooms in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bathroom, shower. Um, yeah, so... In the perfect world, yes, the fair board needs to probably have their own meter.
The septic line follow the same line?
No, there's only one septic line out there.
If you're gonna put one in a barn here with bathrooms, you're gonna have to-
Yeah, that septic runs right up through here.
Does it?
Yeah, and it's on inside here and goes right up, and then goes over into Shadow Ridge.
Well, yeah, it runs right along the west fence line.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
That's clear out here.
Wherever it's, I was just coming behind the grandstand.
Oh, yeah.
Just-
The only septic on the whole property is from these bathrooms over to that manhole inside Saddle Club property.
The building's on the east here.
Yeah, the, the actual Saddle Club.
But to your point, Bill, yeah, sooner or later, we're gonna have to tie that sewer in.
Tie it in there, you have to figure that out.
Do you still have to call for a locate?
Yes.
Uh, for this water line going in?
We gotta like, we gotta do that. And are you going to meter in the fire department as well?
Yes.
I, same conversation, see? I personally think we should.
Everybody needs to be responsible for their usage.
That way we know in breaks who's paying what.
From what I've been told, at worst, they have agreed to meter there.
Okay, yeah, and that would be that workshop conversation with all the entities involved, saying, okay.
That's what I've been told.
Now, Dave told me a meter, he didn't, certainly not for a four inch line, but a meter for a three-quarter or one inch line ran about three grand.
So, so what else are you hoping to get out of this discussion now, so?
Well, the biggest thing I wanted was, was first and foremost acknowledgement that the, uh, that the lease agreement had you guys, um, as the responsible party for any maintenance, repairs, et cetera. And we've already paid monies last year that, when I read the agreement, I think we, we paid something that we weren't responsible for.
Okay, let's talk about that a little.
Um, as the-
Saddle Club?
As the Saddle Club part of the county?
No, they're not.
We're, we're private, we're a private entity.
Right.
Yeah, so that makes sense, that's something we need to probably iron out in the new agreement once we get the three entities, four entities to get.
Yeah, I mean, what, whatever we gotta do, that's why I'm here, I want a resolve, I want some kind of-
Just resolve that, yeah.
A plan, let's, you know, we can talk about what's happened in the past, and that's fine, but we've gotta look at what's going on now and what is our forward motion.
Just clean up the language.
Yes.
So, then here's the next big question. Uh, section three, I'm still in that.
Yes.
Third line, with all expense of extension of the water mains, repair and maintenance. So, this is why attorneys and judges get paid what they do. What is an extension of a water line, or a water main, sorry? Is that four inch an extension of the water main? Or between the county and the Saddle Club, is the four inch water line the main?
Well, I think that is your main line, then you have your taps coming off of your mains.
You're gonna extend the water to something else, you have responsibilities.
Extensions are going beyond-
Right, right. So, and I agree, Scott, I think between the Saddle Club and the county now, that four inch becomes the main. Round Mountain would not consider that four inch a main.
No, no.
But we're not talking about that. So, the point being then, with all the expense of extension water of the mains, so anything coming off of the mains, right? In this case, the four inch water line, then I would agree that that, this lease says that that, this lease says that the lethe assumes the responsibility to pay that.
Right.
To replace that main, doesn't say anything in here about replacing it.
Well, it doesn't say anything about replacing, but it does talk about repair.
Yes, repair and maintenance, but repair and replace, two different animals, right?
Sometimes.
I mean, the county just stood the expense of repairing that main.
Yes, and Saddle Club has four times.
Right. But, they didn't pay anything on, when the county just repaired it down by the.
No.
But, they have paid for it, obviously, to repair that, because back in those days, it's on our ground, we're gonna fix it. That's how we operate, right?
Absolutely.
So, what's the question? Well, I don't know that there is a hanging question here. I think the conversation was about section three, number one, who's gonna pay for what? That's what it really boils down to.
Cuz I mean, we're waterless now. We've been waterless for months.
And do you remember where the problem is right now? It looks like the erosion was rough there by that valve.
Yeah, if you guys look at the back sheet of this, it's literally right along this line. So, the valve is at the corner of the leased property, and it's really right there in front of that fence line, which is our bull's bullpen.
So, the great question here, I use this word loosely, should we fix it again in the interim before we ever get to the point where we put in new water?
And that's a great question. So, I will call that another Band-Aid on a system that we know is going to fail again. We know is going to, because it's been a, you know.
But, do you wanna go without water?
Can you get by without it? Do we get it fixed or not?
I would say, if we can get it fixed, so we can at least resume, we can throttle down our valve beyond there to make sure that if another water hammer or something, you know.
That's what's popping, Bill's water hammer.
Exactly, because when they're filling up those county trucks, somebody slams that valve, you get that water hammer. Now, we've got that weak point. So, if we can throttle our valve down, at least fix it, as you say, another Band-Aid is what it's gonna be, but then we can get our building back up and running, and we have another community facility available to the people of this county that use it on a regular basis.
Is that what you wanna do, or do you wanna wait and not put a Band-Aid on it?
You know, I think that's something that the board actually needs to talk about, to be honest. We do have another board meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. I think you guys have some things to discuss as, you know, the leases, if you will.
We know we can't work on it until the ground falls out, you got time.
Well, and I don't even know if, yeah.
What I mean by that is, I don't know how much you're gonna be needing it anyway.
Well, and that's a great question, Commissioner Canada. We've got, you know, and I don't have our calendar in front of me talking about who has actually set up in the past for future usage, but I can tell you, we do have a community calendar, if you will, for reservations for that building.
But, you've had three or four activities up there already, outwater, right? I've been to two of them.
Yeah, yeah, and we've got the outhouse out there, but you've got no.
Guess what? They rented an outhouse.
Yeah, we had to get outhouses, so there was a facility there.
Band-aid this until we could.
I think so.
With the long-term solution.
And I'm almost thinking, if we can get it repaired long enough, so we can get the facility back and running, you know, and I don't wanna speak for the entire board. I think that I have a responsibility to discuss it with my board, whether it be through electronic or whatever, but I definitely think we've gotta get that facility back up and running, and then we have to have a permanent fix.
I agree with that. Scott, let me ask you a quick.
Let me say something on that. Right there where that break is, I was told there's a T going east.
East?
Yes.
Where's that map?
There's a new line running into the bullpen.
Yeah, but it's, well, I can't tell you where the break is, so.
What you're talking about is right here?
Yeah, George told me there's a new line running east.
They repaired that line, but I didn't know.
No, it's just passed. It's about up in here.
So, Scott, I couldn't see what you were talking about.
It's, I think it's this, cuz this is the.
They repaired this line.
Right, but that's coming off the main line.
And that's a one inch.
There's a T, and I'm guessing that that water hammer blew that T apart. That's what I'm guessing.
Okay, but I don't, I don't believe there's a new line in there.
Well, I don't know.
This is, this is the line that just waters the bullpen.
They repaired that, it blew apart right here. I looked at it.
And I actually did that repair with Pat Coons.
So, here's a question I had for you, Scott.
This blew apart several times, didn't it? Anyhow, right back here, I think that that line's leaking right there, that T.
And that's why I say, I don't know where that line is.
Yeah, it's right along there.
If we expose that, what we're gonna consider the four inch main line for us, right, county and the, if we expose that now, that's charged. No, it's not under pressure, there's water.
We gotta shut up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we valved it off at the corner.
It's just not charged, doesn't have pressure behind it.
Right.
There's a little water in the line, yeah.
Just stagnant.
Not a big risk of that freezing if we dig it up and fix it in a day or so, right?
No.
Well, we can cover that.
Yeah, we can always saddle or blanket it, right? If worse comes to worse.
I think a guy can dig it up and fix it in a day.
But, if it's actually coming out, it may have already drained the line anyway.
Yeah.
Right, it could have drained that line.
That line could be drained.
More than likely it did, because of the way I saw the bubbling when it happened.
So, my question then, why I asked that was this, what if we asked Gary Hyde at Roden Bridge to go up there and expose that?
And fix it?
Well, and then Saddle Club fixes.
I can get in and fix it if I have. That's right. I just need to see it, I gotta be, get the exposure too.
And I'll leave it open.
But, and that's why I asked, there's no guarantee that Gary could expose it on the same day that you'd be available to fix it.
I'll make myself available, as long as I'm here.
If he'd be willing to take a hoe up there and expose that, I mean, we're not talking about a ton of money for fitting to fix it.
No, no, schedule forty PVC.
Yeah, I mean, how hard, how physically it'd be, you know? So, that's not the point, it's really time and machine to get up there and get it exposed and dug up. I'll bet you within sixty feet of that corner, in the last year, it's been repaired four or five times, even.
Because that's getting towards the end of your line, that's where you're getting the effects of that hat and the surges.
And then let's work towards the full solution.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
I agree with you, Jay.
I would certainly volunteer to talk to Gary Hyde about the possibility of the county going up and digging that out, cuz that is repair and maintenance.
I know Gary would be happy to do it. We're gonna have an executive session today.
And I'll bring it to my board, and I'm sure they'll agree with this decision.
Just the four of us.
You have a worthless, I don't wanna see worthless.
Well, it's an otherwise facility.
You have a usable building, you have to bring water in and pour it out and stuff. It's just not appropriate.
No, I mean, we're spending money to have.
It's one thing, but. Okay, all right, so, we good?
I think so.
We have a meeting in here at one, and then, no, we have an executive session at one and a meeting in here at one, so we're gonna have to talk about that. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in, thanks for your time, but I know it drags on, but.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for being patient.
So, I'll see you, brother. You doing okay?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you all.
So, gentlemen, anything else come before the meeting? If not, chair would entertain a motion?
We adjourn, then we go.
To adjourn into an executive session.
Recession.
Or recess.
We recess for three minutes, and reconvene as an executive session.
I'll second it. Move to second, take a five-minute recess, three-minute recess instead, and then reconvene into executive session. All things, I, I pose nay. The time is one twelve PM. Pursuant to Commissioner Prince's motion made prior to the recess, we will move into executive session for the purpose of attaining legal advice under Colorado revised section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B. Bear with me just a second.
So, that was a motion by you, Jay?
Jay had made it, yes, and I said.
You have a new second, Jay.
So, it is, yeah, you can close that, thank you. It is one thirteen PM, and, sorry, it is November twenty-seventh, and the time is one fourteen PM. For the record, I am the chairman, and as required by open meetings, this session is being recorded. Also.
Not recorded?
No.
Not being.
We're not, is not being recorded. It's being recorded right now because we haven't gone into executive session yet. Also present at this executive session are the following persons, Clerk to the Board, Kelly Kemper, Commissioner Canada, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Prince, Attorney Clint Smith, and I'm assuming Administrative Assistant Cara Evans will also return and be part of the executive session. This is an executive session for the following purpose, and that is to obtain legal advice. Not caution each participant to confine all discussion to the stated purpose of the executive session, and that no formal action may occur in the executive session. If at any point in the executive session, any participant believes the discussion is going outside the proper scope of the executive session, please interrupt the discussion and make an objection. That being said, we are now in executive session.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Okay.
The Board of County Commissioners meeting will reconvene. The time is now one fifty-eight PM, and the executive session pertaining or requesting legal advice via Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B has now been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Administrative Assistant Cara Evans, Clerk to the Board, Kelly Kemper, Commissioner Canada, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Prince, and County Attorney Clint Smith. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Hearing none, then we will move on. The next agenda item before public comment.
Tom, I need to certify.
Oh, yeah, you need to certify, I'm sorry.
During the, as county attorney, I'll certify. During the executive session, it was for legal advice, it was not recorded, the discussion did stay on topic, and no decisions were made during the executive session.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, apologize for forgetting. So, with that, the chair would ask, on behalf of the commission, that you share with us publicly information that you've discovered on our behalf.
This has to do with the ongoing discussions we're having with the West Custer County Hospital District concerning ambulance service in Custer County, and specifically, the dispute that's arisen about providing ongoing coverage for that portion of the county that is outside the boundaries of the hospital district. I had actually been doing research on the issue of mill levies and how the hospital district mill levy worked, and that in the event that the hospital district decided it was no longer going to provide ambulance service, or that was the joint agreement, that how that mill levy would be dissolved, but, and I wrote a memo to that effect, but as I was researching, after I'd already prepared that memo, I was doing some additional research, and I came across another statutory provision I wasn't aware of, and I wanted to correct my legal advice to you previously. The county has been proceeding on my legal advice that the county commissioners had the sole authority to organize, own, operate, control, direct, manage, contract for, or furnish ambulance service within the boundaries of the county, and that's under the powers of the Board of County Commissioners. And when you, during the research, if you go to the index of the Colorado statutes and look up ambulance service and everything, that's the only provision that appears, and so that was my advice to you. I've discovered another statutory provision that was very, very hard to find, and I actually have to admit, I stumbled across it, but I think this is very important, cuz I, my advice has now changed. Colorado revised statute thirty-two dash one dash ten oh three talks about health service districts and additional powers of health service districts, and first of all, a health service district is defined as being a hospital district, so, and that was another thing that I, I wasn't even looking under, health service districts, I just happened to come across this, but in that statute, paragraph one, subparagraph A, talks about the powers, and I'm gonna skip down to the power that at the very bottom of subparagraph A, it says that a health service district has the authority to organize, own, operate, control, direct, manage, contract for, or furnish ambulance service in said district. And that's basically identical to the language that gives the county commissioners the authority to do that, so when I advised you that it was exclusive to the Board of County Commissioners, that was incorrect, the hospital district does have that authority as well. And then there's subparagraph B right below that, which at first I thought was just repetitive. It says to organize, own, operate, control, direct, manage, contract for, or furnish ambulance service. It does not include the last three words in the previous subparagraph, which is in said district. And at first I thought, well, it's just sloppy drafting of a statute, and it's repeating itself, but then I realized that was done on purpose, because it gives the hospital district the authority, if it so chooses, it's not mandatory, but if it so chooses, to have ambulance service within the district, but also without the bound, outside the boundaries of the district, if they choose to operate under subparagraph C, or excuse me, B, and it's my feeling at this point, that given the agreement that was entered into thirty years ago with the hospital district and the county, for them to provide ambulance service outside the boundaries of the hospital district that they're operating under that statutory language, I have no idea if the hospital district is even aware of this statutory provision. As I said, I think it's very obscure, it was hard to find, and I didn't find it because of extensive research, it was cuz I was just leafing through here and happened to come across this, and if they know about it, I don't know why they would not have disclosed it sooner, but I wanted to bring that to your attention so that you could proceed accordingly, because at our last meeting, I think you voted to send a letter to the hospital district as to your position, based on what Jay had reported to you as a recommendation he had made, but it's my understanding that letter has never actually gone out yet, and you may want to reconsider here.
Let me, go ahead. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Actually, that's a great thing that you did find it, so I think we're obligated to make sure the hospital district gets that and understands that and can review it, and because of that, we probably ought to think about sending the memo out, because it is focused without that knowledge, and it might change how we view it as well, so we need to have another talk about that, too. So, how do you want to proceed? You want to make a motion?
Well, I think a question now, so that I understand, subparagraph A says that they have the right to own, organize, all that within a district, right? Provide or furnish ambulance service in said district, so that would be talking about their hospital district?
Correct.
And then sub B doesn't limit it to said district, therefore, we're to assume they could, that could happen anywhere.
That they could agree to go outside the boundaries of their district and contract for it.
And they would be legally able to do that, if that's what they chose to do.
Correct.
It wouldn't prevent them from going outside of their district.
And that doesn't prevent them from operating with the contract we have.
Take a step.
Go ahead.
That's why the contract from nineteen eighty-nine actually is still enforceable, because they had the right to enter into it at that time, assuming this statute was in effect in nineteen eighty-nine. We don't know that.
Yeah.
I don't know, if we could look at the bottom of the statute, I'll tell you when it was enacted.
I agree with, I think, what council's recommending, and you were asking, what do you think we ought to do? I think in light of this new information, I would move, we rescind the letter, I would remove.
You would move.
I would move that the board rescind the action of authorizing me to draft and send a letter to the chairman of the hospital district specifying what we felt we could offer based on the committee's report.
I'll second that.
Then move to second to rescind the action of the board authorizing the chairman to draft and send a letter to chairman of the board of directors of the hospital district. Discussion? So, with, if this passes, then we're pulling back the offer to pay the district fourteen thousand dollars a year, is that how you understand that?
Yeah, that is correct.
At this point?
That's what I was gonna say.
It doesn't mean we won't do something later, but right now?
Right now, we're retracting that offer, pending further discussion between the three of us on how we want to proceed, and it may or may not be part of the official recommendation.
That way, it gives them time to look at the new information, too, and then we'll come up with a.
And this has not, this doesn't have any effect on our finance department, because this is all gonna happen in twenty twenty. Correct. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of rescinding the motion of sending the letter, the action of the board of sending the letter to the hospital district, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries. Motion carries. I will retain this letter then in my files, so that if we want to use any or part of it later on, we'll have it. I'm not gonna...
Okay, delete.
Delete it?
No. We may want to, we may want to copy some. I had suggested an amendment to it, just a couple of words, but it's irrelevant now. I just wanted to mention that.
And you know what? That's why I didn't send it, because we had agreed. Let's not send it until we all had an...
Make sure we look at the Word and then decide.
I would make a couple of grammatical changes, I think it was, or whatever it was.
I don't know how the vote went.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Now, all right, so that's solved, now we need to direct Clint to give them the information. How are we gonna do it? Are we just...
Yeah, I think so, don't you? I mean...
I would recommend that you ask me to, or direct me to write another letter, making specific reference to this, you know, this new statutory language that I just discovered and made available to you as soon as I found out about it.
Let me move that. I move that we make sure you send a letter to the hospital.
I'll draft one for the next meeting.
For us to review, so we can send it to them, so they get the same information we're all working from together now. Updated.
Okay, and so let's make this an agenda item for December five, then.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to authorize County Council to draft a letter to Chairman Tobin of the Hospital District, informing them of this new uh, information that's come to light by your research, that we believe that may affect how the hospital district wants to proceed concerning their EMS.
That's right. It affects the ambulance service in the county.
Because they did, it's clear from this, they had the authority to go outside the hospital district to contract for that, which is actually, they contracted with the county back in nineteen eighty-nine to take this upon themselves. And then they had a, basically, a contract, it may have been an informal contract, but with Florence EMS to, or Fremont County EMS to...
NIGA.
Well, and I just, I think if we're gonna... We've been accused of not, but I think in an effort to move forward in a positive, congenial collaborative effort to solve this issue, we need to give this information to the...
I really think that this is, you know, taking the high road. My recommendation to you, as your attorney, is this something we didn't have to disclose, but you, as you stated, uh, you've talked about previously, on many occasions, your primary interest is serving the citizens of the county. So I think the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Directors for the Hospital District should have the same goal in mind.
Right.
And this will facilitate...
Rebase line things, we'll get back together. So we're gonna meet in, after this, in a month.
And then, uh, no, we've, not in the motion, but the idea was that you'd have this for us to review on December the fifth.
That's what I meant.
I'll email it to you ahead of time, of course, so you can look at it.
So would you add an agenda item, December fifth? Uh, consideration of a letter to...
Form the hospital district.
West Custer County Hospital District Board of Directors. You just put the clinic Board of Directors. Uh, any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye? Aye, posnay? Uh, thank you for doing that. Thanks for finding that, oh my gosh. And if, I suppose if a person would have looked up health service districts...
Or ambulance.
I don't know.
Would you find it under any...
It's not in the index anywhere, and there's no reference to it from other statutes by all my...
Those are...
That term, that hospital district.
Right.
I mean, you wouldn't know that.
Yeah, exactly.
Is this time for me to ask for a raise then?
No, because, uh, any other public comment come before the board? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Second, been moved in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye? Aye, posnay?